At 7:10. Apologize for the slight delay. I will point out, before I forget, that Nancy Harrington is excused tonight. She's feeling under the weather with a cold. She's confident it's a cold and not something more elaborate. But she didn't want to spread that, and we appreciate that. So if you will rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your being here tonight. It's going to take me just a few minutes to get myself reorganized here, so. By way of announcements, I only have voting day. The official ballot vote will be held on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the three polling locations. James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman Church. Please contact the town clerk's office at 424-3651 or visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State's website to find your specific polling location if you have any questions. Upcoming town council meetings will be meeting on Thursday, April 8th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. It's a regular meeting here in this room. And Thursday, April 22nd, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in this room for a regular meeting. Eileen, do you have any other announcements?
I do. The Merrimack Parks and Recreation and the Lions Club of Merrimack have teamed up with the Red Cross to host a spring community blood drive at Wasserman Park on Saturday, April 3rd, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The American Red Cross is facing a shortage that has led to an urgent need for blood donors of all types. Please consider donating an hour of your time to give a pint of blood and help to save three lives. Advanced registration is required and can be done by visiting Parks and Recreation Department website at www.merrimackparksandrec.org. Merrimackparksandrec.org. The assessing department is accepting applications for the elderly and disabled property tax exemptions. The filing deadline is April 15th. More information about each program is available on the assessing page of the town's website or calling the assessing department at 424-5136. And I think many of you will be happy to see an old face that's back. She doesn't have an old face. Sorry, that was a... No. To see, yes, to see a long-term employee come back, Maureen Covell. She's very dearly loved by the customers that come in and love to see her. And she meets with them and gives them information. One of the nicest people you could meet, so we're delighted to have her back. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the announcements? Moving right along. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements tonight. We do have a couple of appointments. We'll start with the town election discussion, the official ballot vote that's on April 13th, submitted by town moderator Lynn Christensen. Basically, we're asking Lynn to provide us with any update on the upcoming town election schedule for Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. Hopefully, nobody in this room will forget that. It's not even April 1st.
Are going to go off just like every other election in town does. You have three polling sites. Wherever you've gone before, unless you were told you were in the wrong place, go there again. You can look it up on the Secretary of State's website if you're not sure where to go or call the town clerk. But we'll have the three polling sites. And I have people all set up to work. I'm expecting each of you, with the exception of Mr. Boyd, to participate. Bill is not eligible because he's on the ballot as a non-election official. Tom and Nancy are on the ballot, but they are on the ballot as an election official, so they are still required to be there. I don't see anything strange or startling. We've had about two utter ballot requests for absentee ballots, which is on a normal year high. Normally, we get anywhere from 30 to 50 for the past, I don't know, 20, 30 years that I've been doing this. Last year, we had an exceptionally high year, but... So it's a little high, but not extraordinary. So nothing strange or startling going on. I'm not expecting a huge turnout. We don't normally get a huge turnout for this election, so we'll manage with whoever's there.
Do you expect it to be different because there'll be three ballots to be passed out instead of just two?
Well, that's a little different, but the difference from my point of view or from my detailing is we normally, you can put a ballot into any voting booth, but for whatever reason, the state election has to go into one ballot box. It can't go into the other two. Town or state can go into either of the other two. It's just something weird about how the ballot was set up and the...
Say this over again.
We have three boxes, which is typical. And we typically label one of them for town, one of them for school, one of them for state, only because it's easier sorting at the end of the night. If a town goes in... The difference is the state ballots can only go into the state box.
Okay.
If they go into one of the other boxes, they won't be counted because the machine is...
Will they be rejected?
Nope. It just won't be. And so my moderators will be watching for that very closely. The town can go into the school, the school can go into the town. It gets counted the same, no matter what, because the programming recognizes which ballot is there and will count it appropriate. We always have a few that somebody goes, "Oops!"
Slipped over, yeah.
Well, it happens. But it's... We separate them only because it's easier to sort at the end of the night. The school ballots go out to the school district to be stored. Town goes to the town to be stored. And rather than having people sitting there doing mundane tasks of sorting, this is an easier way of doing it, just for our convenience. We did have one unusual occurrence with the school ballot. There is a person that had filed for election whose lease ran out on or is running out on March 31st. They have signed a new lease effective April 1st in Nashua. So is no longer eligible to be elected to a school position.
Right.
Until we get officially notified, which won't happen until after April 1st, they're on the ballot. So we are going to have to spend time going through the ballot if, in fact, this is true. You know, something can change and it doesn't... The ballots are being printed with that name on it. If, in fact, that person does move out of town on April 1st or sometime prior to April 13th, we're going to have to go through all of those ballots, every one of them, and take a magic marker and cross out that name.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
The other option was to take a sticker and put the sticker over the name. Well, no. The reason no is because the machines will jam if you have those stickers.
Well, that's exactly what I was saying. Machines will jam and we'll have troubles all night long.
And so based on state law that, you know, it really says pasters, but Secretary of State has said, "No, you can use a Sharpie," and so... But it's going to be extra work to do that. So, you know, never a dull moment. I said, "You couldn't delay your moving out of town until the 15th?" No, can't do it.
Is the programming going to be adjusted to skip over that box?
Uh, yes.
Because if the box has a mark in it, normally the programming would say...
The box will not have a mark in it. Well, yeah, I suppose you could block off the name. Somebody could still put a mark in it and... No, but the programming will be all set, so that it will take care of it.
Okay.
So not an issue, just...
I do, but after...
Peter?
Lynn, just, I kind of know the answer. I've been asking, but it came up in conversation with a few people. We have three town council positions open, four people running for that.
Correct.
But we have the potential that there could be a fourth, depending on the state representative race, fourth town council position opening up.
Not for this election.
Okay, that's what I want to kind of get out there, because somebody asked me that. And people might want to know that even if that fourth position became open, that the...
Has nothing to do with this election.
Okay.
This election, there are four people running for three open slots. Yours, Tom's, and Nancy's. The three of you are up for... Or your term is expiring, so. Tom and Nancy obviously have filed for reelection. You have not. There are two people who have not been on the board but have filed for election. So there are four people running for those three empty slots. That's all we're dealing with on the 13th.
And that was just a question about...
Depending upon what happens after the 13th.
But that totally depends on whether that council would decide to retire, resign, because he's not required to resign to be a town, a state rep.
That is not a incompatible office, so. In this case, Mr. Boyd could remain on the town council. He could be a state rep if he's elected. And it doesn't preclude anything. If he decides to resign or if anybody else decides to resign for whatever reason, then you deal with a vacancy and that's all prescribed by state law.
By law and charter.
You know, if Barbara decides to move out of town and go back to Portuguese town, then, you know, her spot would be open and we deal with vacancy. But that's well after the election. It has nothing to do with the 13th, thankfully.
And you pointed out, I think I missed it, that Nancy and I will be working as election officials.
You are.
Without any issues.
You are election officials, and as long as you are on the ballot as an election official, then you are still required to participate in it. If either one of you are running for school board or budget committee or something else that is not an election official, then you would be disqualified from working at the election, just like Mr. Boyd is. But you are not. You are running for an election official position. And so therefore, I expect you to be there. We always have fun.
Oops. Stepped on that one, didn't I?
We always have fun.
We do.
And you guys, no, you guys have been a tremendous asset. I am short a few people, whether it's because of COVID or moving out of town. I've recruited a couple of new ones that we're starting to train. But even so, having people that understand the process and know what to do there. You know, to me, it's my fun day. I get to see people in town that I haven't seen all year and you get to make it work. So yes, I expect you there and I appreciate your help and your willingness to be there.
Okay. And you're looking for two of us at each site?
Yes, please.
So we have at least six of us left.
If you can't be there...
Acceptable.
Or you can only be there for half the day, then I would expect you to get a...
Replacement.
A spouse, a neighbor, a child, a friend, a TPW worker or somebody to be there as you're designated. I think I sent you all the AG report from the last election. They come every year. They go through, they have an extensive checklist of, "Do you do this? Do you do this? What is this?" One of the things on that checklist is, "Where are the town councilors? How many are here?" And we've always been able to say, "Right over there, there they are, and they're helping." We had two minor dings on this one, but everything else we passed with flying colors, as we usually do. You know, we've been doing it long enough. We know what we're doing, so.
Okay. Finley?
Do you know how many ballots are being printed?
Just absent.
I believe we have ordered 6,000.
Thanks.
And people will be handed one of each when they check in. If they request an absentee ballot, they will be given all three. You don't request just a state or just a town. You request absentee ballot because you're not going to be here, you get given all three. Whether you try them all is up to you, but so we do it.
That's between now and then. The same rules apply for absentee ballots being turned in by...
We do not have ballots yet. The absentee request form is on the town website, right up at the top. You can easily request it. It's a very simple process to do. If you want to take the time, go into town hall. Once the ballots get here, you can go in, ask for the ballot. They'll give it to you right... They'll give all three to you right then. You can stand on the side, go sit down on one of the benches, fill it out, and turn it right back in then. You don't need to take it home and mail it and be concerned about post office and anything else. But that's a very simple process to do if you want to do that. But they'll be available, we're hoping, the beginning of the week. But until they come in and we get proofread them, you know, they're going to be...
One more time. The... That's not a huge amount of time for them to request them and then turn it around in the mail. So people need to be paying attention to that.
Yes, they do. Yep.
And they need to be in by election day or the day before election?
Five o'clock, election day.
Election day. And they can drop them off at the polls like they did last time?
You can bring them into the polls and drop them off, yes.
Okay, which... Okay. Can they still use COVID-19 or something as an excuse?
I don't believe, I don't believe COVID is actually listed on it. It's considered a medical disability, and so you just check off medical disability.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Nope. I think we're good.
We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
April 13th. Okay. I still had our old agenda, and our new agenda was slightly modified, so I apologize for skipping over number one. Number one, we're going to go back to is the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES settlement agreement update with... Settlement Agreement with St. Cobain update with the town council, submitted by the Assistant Director of Public Works, wastewater Sarita Croce, the town council to receive an update on the latest settlement agreement between NHDES and St. Cobain Performance Plastics. I do want to make a statement, if you will. The town stands by the accuracy of the calculations and comments which were provided to NHDES and the courts. The town developed these comments and calculations using three expert consultants and an environmental attorney. Neither NHDES nor SGPP have provided to the town any specific comments regarding the accuracy of our consultants' calculations or our comments. In fact, all the elements of the consent decree were obtained from the town's technical comment letters. If NHDES and/or SGPP continue to believe that our claims, facts, or figures are inaccurate or in error, I challenge them to sit down with us and review the material and data at any time. We're more than happy to have them come talk to us and tell us where they think we might be not being factual. Sarita, I'm going to leave the rest of you to present.
Thank you very much, Chairman Koenig. Vice Chair Boyd and members of the Town of Merrimack Town Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you this evening. This evening, I'd like to talk to you, and it seems like I've been here a lot since 2016, to talk about St. Cobain. And it was, in fact, in 2016 that we discovered that we actually had an issue with our drinking water and our groundwater. And what we discovered was that the primary cause of the PFAS contamination, of which PFOA was the thing we were looking at the most at the time, the PFAS contamination to our town's land, water, and air comes from St. Cobain's process stack emissions. And sometimes people will call process stacks "smoke stacks," so I'll try to use those two terms interchangeably. What they're emitting right now is PFAS. Again, what we are most familiar with are PFOA and PFOS. They're precursors. I want to go into what a precursor is just a little bit for everyone, so we understand. If you have five Legos and all the Legos have different colors, and you take one of the Legos off, that's kind of what might happen in the environment. You have this PFAS compound, and a little bit of it comes off and it degrades. Well, now what happens is it can go and find something else that did that, and it can make your PFOA or PFOS or any one of those PFAS compounds that we don't, we're concerned about, again. So just because you're looking at PFOA and PFOS doesn't mean you've looked at the whole picture. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is Gen X. So they're emitting right now PFAS, precursors, and Gen X. So why is Gen X important? Well, Gen X is the thing that the industry went to to make these nonstick coatings that used to be PFOA. So if you look at Gen X in St. Cobain's operations, you'll see that it's there in much, much higher concentrations. Now, why are all these compounds important? Well, they have something called a carbon fluoride bond. And a carbon fluoride bond is one of the strongest bonds known to mankind. Well, what does that mean? It means that these things don't really degrade completely in the environment, and that's why they've received the fond term "forever chemicals." Now, New Hampshire DES, realizing that we had a problem, required St. Cobain to install a regenerative thermal oxidizer, and they actually issued an air permit to St. Cobain to require that oxidizer to be installed. Sometimes we refer to the oxidizer as an RTO. So what is an oxidizer? An oxidizer is an air pollution control device. What does that mean? Well, it's like an incinerator. It burns everything. And it's connected to all St. Cobain's process stacks. Again, we call it sometimes "smoke stacks." Now, what this oxidizer does or this incinerator does is it breaks that really, really tough carbon fluoride bond by heating all of these chemicals to 1,832 degrees Fahrenheit. So it's super hot. And when those carbon fluoride bonds break, they create something that's called hydrogen fluoride gas. That's a deadly gas. I'd like to just, and I wasn't originally going to say this, but I wanted everyone to know, that I've actually worked with hydrogen fluoride in my career. At one of the companies, we had a large tank with HF in it. And we were always told that if you had an inch square of 30% HF, you would indeed die. So this stuff is extremely toxic, and I know it not from reading a book, but from working with it in my career. New Hampshire DES issued a flawed air permit. And how do we know that? Well, the town hired three consultants and an environmental attorney, as Chairman Koenig had said earlier, and they helped us discover the major flaws in the air permit. Now, the town spent in excess of $100,000 on these experts to complete this technical review. And quite honestly, that was New Hampshire DES's job. The technical experts included a stack testing, an analytical chemistry expert, included an air permitting and an air toxics consultant. Now, this gentleman has a professional engineer's license and also has extensive permitting experience, especially with RTOs. And we also had an environmental remediation consultant and an environmental attorney. I had the privilege to come to you, or actually, it wasn't a good night, but I came to you on February 11th, 2021, to let you know that St. Cobain did not, in fact, install the RTO as required by the air permit by February 11th, 2021. So once the air permit deadline was missed, New Hampshire DES took the opportunity to correct these major flaws that we had pointed out. New Hampshire DES made the corrections via a settlement agreement. And this settlement agreement is also called a consent decree. So what achievements do we have in this consent decree that we can talk about? Number one, St. Cobain was required to reduce the overall hours of operation by 433 hours per month. So this goes directly to the fact that they needed to reduce the overall hours of operation to make sure that they didn't cause and contribute to contamination of our groundwater and drinking water. St. Cobain was also required to reduce the PFOA emissions by 42% based on the 2018 emissions. I'd really like to talk about this one for a second. So back in 2016, when I was coming here fairly frequently to talk to you about what was going on, I remember St. Cobain and New Hampshire DES emphatically stating to us that St. Cobain did not use PFOA in any of their process operations. And what we indeed found out in 2018 as a result of the stack testing was that was false. And in fact, what we found out was that PFOA could be present in their coating chemicals or their coating emissions in upwards of 24,000 PPT. That's a significant amount. They also, in the original permit that New Hampshire DES issued, they only required St. Cobain to test the outlet of the RTO. So if you got gases going into an RTO, you got them coming out, they only required them to test the outlet, and they only required them to measure temperature. Well, I have a little analogy that I'd like to share with everybody about only looking at temperature. Now, let us say, for example, we all turn on the sanitize cycle in our dishwasher. And we know that the sanitize cycle in the dishwasher will achieve a certain temperature. And we put our dirty dishes into that dishwasher. Well, when we open up the dishwasher after it's done and we take a look at those dishes, if those dishes are still dirty, nobody cares about the sanitize cycle or the temperature that the dishwasher reached. All we care about is the dirt that's left on those dishes. And that's the point here about the RTO. That's great that you're going to achieve 1,832 degrees Fahrenheit, but in all honesty, that is not the indicator and that's not the measuring criteria that we use in the industry to determine that an RTO is working. What we use is efficiency. And that means you measure what goes in and you measure what goes out, and you figure out how much you remove. Well, in the agreement with St. Cobain, New Hampshire DES is now requiring St. Cobain, as a result of our comments, to measure the inlet and outlet of the RTO to ensure that PFAS is being properly treated or degraded, destructed. I have to spend a little bit of time on this particular slide, but I'd like to say that one of our greatest achievements in this whole process was hydrogen fluoride emissions calculations and evaluations. So New Hampshire DES, when they did the original permit, what they allowed St. Cobain to do is regardless of the raw materials that are present, and if you take a look on the left-hand side, you'll see this is raw materials, and regardless of the emissions from the process stacks, St. Cobain could send all their stuff to the RTO, and the emissions, which we know would generate that deadly hydrogen sulfide or hydrogen fluoride gas, were uncontrolled. So what does that mean? That means we know that the RTO was going to break that carbon fluoride bond. We know that fluoride was going to go around and find a hydrogen and make hydrogen fluoride. And we know that DES decided, "Hey, okay, it's all right. They can do that, and it doesn't have to be controlled." Well, why is it a big deal? The reason why it's a big deal is we have to go back to that discussion of Gen X. So you remember I said we were looking at upwards of 24,000 PPT of PFOA? Well, we are looking upwards of 1,470,000 PPT of Gen X. And that's not double. That's not triple. It's significantly higher. And what we know is both St. Cobain and New Hampshire DES ignored Gen X emissions when they did their calculations. And that is a significant omission. So as a result of the town's comments, you can see what is now happening on the right-hand side over here. So now, as part of the agreement, St. Cobain is required to test all their raw materials and determine how much fluoride is in all these raw materials. They're required, as a result of the testing and the evaluation, to do something that's called a mass balance. So that means how much stuff is going in and how much stuff is coming out. They're required to also look at worst-case scenario. They're looking at worst-case scenario emissions. So that means 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, which is 8,760 hours a year. So they have to look at those emissions being emitted 8,760 hours a year to the RTO. Now, they're supposed to test what's going into the RTO, so they do have fluoride as part of their process operations, and they're supposed to test what's going out of the RTO. Not only that, St. Cobain is required before the RTO is placed online. So the RTO now is allowed to be placed online on July 30th, or that's the agreement deadline, July 30th, 2021. The St. Cobain is required to complete this entire analysis by June 30th, 2021. And not only are they supposed to figure out how much we're dealing with, they're also supposed to control those emissions. What that means is they cannot exceed the ambient air limit for hydrogen fluoride gas. And this is, again, as we put it, a deadly gas, so it's not something to be trifled with. Now, the controls can be any number of ways. They can control by operating hour limitations, kind of like what Number One was talking about. They're operating 433 hours, less than what they were before. And they can also do this by putting on something called a scrubber. And what the scrubber would do would remove the hydrogen fluoride emissions from the gas coming out of the RTO, which would absolutely ensure that the public was not exposed to it. One of the last things is, and it is definitely something that the town has talked about in multiple communications to St. that the town has talked about in multiple communications to St. Cobain, was the emissions from their stormwater and specifically their roof drain. So what we have seen, again, P F O A being the primary contaminant of concern, that the roof drains from St. Cobain can emit anywhere from one thousand four hundred to fifty-two thousand P P T of P F O A. Now, when we look at the ambient groundwater quality standard, which is also a drinking water standard for P F O A, it's twelve. So again, we're not dealing with double. We're not dealing with triple. We're dealing with significantly higher concentrations. So what the consent decree requires is that St. Cobain conduct an evaluation or rainwater study to determine the onsite and offsite impacts of their emissions. So let's talk about the path forward. We need to continue to monitor and review the technical documents provided by St. Cobain and New Hampshire D E S for, honestly, for accuracy. The town needs to maintain its vigilance. We need to know that these H F calculations that they're going to complete before June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, are accurate. We need to know that the stack testing that they execute after they install this R T O, it's within sixty days, is done correctly. We need to know that the analytical data is correct, and we need to make sure, beyond a shadow of a doubt, that St. Cobain and New Hampshire D E S does not make the same mistakes twice. So I think the moral of the story is based on our vigilance. The town brought to bear the need for New Hampshire D E S to address the flawed air permit, which they issued to St. Cobain. And again, let's remember, we began this journey in two thousand sixteen. So we're not dealing with one year or two years. We're dealing with five years, and nothing has been done. And as a result, New Hampshire D E S and St. Cobain have entered into an agreement, the consent decree, which addresses the concerns raised by the town. I would like to close by thanking all of you, thanking Eileen, thanking Paul for your leadership and your guidance, because, to be quite honest, we would not be here if it wasn't for all of you, and I'd like to thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, Sarita. I appreciate it. It was a very well-presented, concise presentation. Does anybody have any questions at this point? I just not seen any. I have concerns that if somebody picks up this presentation and sees Slide seventeen on the H F, that you made a fantastic presentation, and you described it. I hope they tune into what was seen here so that they can get all the background. Because while we have been arguing for a year now, or almost a year now, that requirement to put a scrubber on there, at least now, S G P P is being required to evaluate how much fluorine is in their overall process and ensure that nothing comes out the other end of the R T O that exceeds the limits of, what, a federal permit for H F?
Yeah, so it's an ambient air limit, and it's regulated by the federal government.
By the Federal Clean Air Act or something like that.
Yes, correct.
So now they're being, they have to look at that before they bring that R T O online. They have to either change their operation or install a scrubber or do whatever it takes to make sure that fluorine doesn't get out there.
Correct.
And that's the teeth in the permit that we didn't see before. And so that's pretty exciting that that accomplishment has been made. And I just wanted to reiterate that because if all I saw was this page, it's a little too concise, in my opinion. But I wanted to make sure we had, because your description was perfect. But people need to understand that, and they need to come back to this presentation, which will be available on the Internet.
Chairman Koenig, I could also write a summary that we could attach to this, so when you put it online, then that summary can also be present.
That would probably be, in my opinion, that would be a good thing.
I will do that.
Thank you.
And I will have it for you tomorrow.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, just very quickly, Sarita. In our court case that we filed, one of the things that we didn't ask for was the study of the rainwater. And lo and behold, in this injunction, we actually got a study of the rainwater, which was, I think, a pleasant surprise for everybody because we had talked about how they had not been cleaning the roofs and that runoff impacting the ambient groundwater level, also impacting our stormwater and M S four permit. I was wondering if you could comment just a little bit more about the significance of that being incorporated into the agreement.
Thank you very much. I kind of went over that very quickly, so my apologies. When we look at the fifty-two thousand P P T that's being discharged, it is not groundwater, but we know that that fifty-two thousand P P T can impact our groundwater, and it can impact also the surface water. And under the M S four permit, what we need to ensure is that the activities in the town do not impact the quality, the stormwater quality to the river or to any other water bodies. And quite honestly, this is a huge issue nationwide. The M S four permit program is a multi, probably it's a trillion-dollar program than if you look at all the money that all the communities across the country are spending. And the number one reason we're doing this is because it's important to make sure those rivers, those lakes, and all those surface waters are safe. They're safe for swimming, they're safe for fishing, and they're safe for any other use that we would like to have. And that is, on another slide, one of the points I make is that we all need water to live. We all want water to enjoy whatever activities we want. But the point is, it's not just water, it's clean water. And that's what we have to focus on.
Peter?
Sarita, thank you for this presentation. And this isn't about your presentation. It's about the fact that we're doing this because after this agreement came out, I read the newspaper articles, I watched Channel Nine, and I watched St. Cobain hail this as a victory for themselves and I think mischaracterized the town's actions here, which I personally took offense to, and I think most of my fellow counselors did. And it was very upsetting to us. It's been clear from the beginning that we've quietly and steadfastly worked towards this goal, and we've stayed on track where St. Cobain clearly hasn't. You know, they came before us, two months before a deadline, and threw a handwritten piece of paper for a multimillion-dollar project, you know, at our code enforcement. Then they subsequently show up two days, they have three months, but they show up two days after the deadline, three days, or was it a few days afterwards? With this plan, you couldn't do this back in November? You know, so there's been so many inaccurate things by this company, and it's been so mismanaged. So thank you, thank you for this, and I appreciate it.
So thank you for that comment, Counselor. I would like to point out, and I think it's important to note, that the R T O design drawings were stamped February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. I'm going to only offer conjecture that there was no intention to install the R T O by February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Yep. Anybody else? One other, I guess one other thing to try and give some perspective to the four hundred and thirty-three hours per month reduction. If they operated full-time, seven days a week, twenty-four hours, it would be roughly seven hundred and twenty hours. So that reduction is more than half the total time that they can operate. And that's a reduction from their current operation. So if they're not operating a hundred percent, that's a reduction from whatever they are currently operating, averaged over the last five months, I believe. So they definitely need to, and have agreed to cut back on their production, even though they have several defense contracts and whatnot. They claim they need to get sorted with.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, it actually comes out, if you were to operate twenty-four hours a day for thirty days with that reduction, it's a little more than nine hours a day that they'd be allowed to operate. It's a significant setback.
Okay, if there are no other comments. Sarita, thank you very much. Thank you, Eileen, for your efforts on it. We really appreciate it, really appreciate it, even if I can't speak. And I hope everybody joins us in understanding that this was a great opportunity for us. That brings us to our third appointment this evening with the annual review with the Technology Committee, submitted by member John Sauter. Per the Town and Merrimack Charter, Section six-six, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Technology Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. John, how are you doing?
I'm all right, but the Technology Committee is not in very good shape.
I understand that. Can you make sure your mic is on? I think Sarita turned it off before she, thank you.
Is it on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We were not able to meet last year because we do not have a quorum. We are authorized for five people, which means a quorum is three, and we have only two members. I am one of the members. The other member is behind me on my left. We did nevertheless manage to do a couple of things in spite of not being able to meet. I got, I was contacted by a couple of people in town who were interested in becoming part of the Technology Committee, and I encouraged them to go to the town website and sign up and get themselves sworn in so we could meet, and neither of them did. So maybe that means I'm not very good at encouraging people.
Work on your salesmanship, yeah.
Yes, I must. Also, I was called upon by the Finance Director to help interview the new Technology Coordinator. Now, I didn't do that as a member of the Technology Committee because the committee can't meet. I did it as an individual. But he was able to contact me because my name's on the town website as a member of the Technology Committee. And so maybe that's the remnant of the Technology Committee is that the people who are on it are contactable by department heads who have a need and think that one of us might, in our individual capacity, be able to provide assistance to the town.
That works. Finley?
This has been a continuous issue for the Technology Committee. And I don't know how it might be gone about that instead of, I mean, keep it as a committee, but having them available, as you've suggested, right with our coordinator and just let them have their meeting monthly or whatever would be desirous by them to make sure we're keeping, accomplish the goals of the Tech Committee as it would have been set up where you could get the membership.
So if I get your, if I get the gist of what you're suggesting is that we don't require a quorum for them to meet, is that written into your bylaws or something that you need a quorum? Or is it just?
I think it's a requirement of any town committee that we have to have a quorum to meet.
Okay. So what do you think we could do? We could reduce the membership to three or a three to five or something like that, and then whoever is active constitutes a quorum.
I don't know how it would work. Paul does have his hand up, but I'm thinking that it just, you know, would be a situation where they would be at the disposal so that you could have these brains that do I T. And understand technology to work together to the good of the town. But I don't know what Paul might suggest.
Okay. Bill, do you want to?
I was just going to say, maybe we change the makeup of the committee to include the new I T coordinator. And by adding that language into the, that individual into the committee would be able to create a quorum.
Possibility. Paul, did you have something to add?
Yeah, they can still meet. So even if they don't have a quorum, they cannot take votes. So basically, what they could do is if there's a topic, they can discuss the topic. It just, they cannot have a formal vote on the topic. But they can still meet and do ideas and present ideas and present theories and things of that sort. I believe the I T coordinator is on the committee. I just don't know if that person off the top of my head is a voting member of the committee or as a staff member to the committee. So, but we can check that out.
In the past, the Techno Coordinator has been a staff member and has attended the meetings to our great benefit, but has not been a voting member.
Okay. I'm going to just touch everybody real quick. Barbara?
Yeah, I just want to point out that if we have three people in the department and three people on the commission, we're having a department meeting for all intents and purposes. It's not a committee meeting. So I'm not sure we've gained anything by just having the department folks in that meeting.
Lon?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to the other member of the committee that's here. He's had his hand up for a while.
I understand that. Can you, you have to come to the microphone and introduce yourself, please, because while you were pointed out to be a member, you weren't introduced.
I just have a quick, I just have a quick question. That's kind of, does it have to be turned on?
No, I need your name first.
Oh, I'm Kevin Cutro.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anyway, kind of related to what you were asking, the question about the quorum, is it, you know, mandatory and things like that? Is it mandatory to have five members? In other words, we could make the committee three members because I get a feeling this is going to be an ongoing situation where you're going to have trouble. It's been, I think I've been on this committee for close to two years, and we have not been able to meet once. So if you continue to have five people, you're going to continue to have problems getting people to be able to meet and actually discuss things. So if it's not a hard and fast rule, you could drop it to three. You have two, no matter what, you can get a third. You've got the other input by having the actual I T guys come in, and you still kind of have a good conversation going. But you won't have the same problem. That's all.
Thank you. Which is where I was going, whether we just drop the membership requirement down to three, but maybe leave it as three to five so that if we do get some other people, they could be seated on the committee without being rejected by saying we're full already or something like that. How do you feel about that, John?
I don't know how that works legally. You might have to make them alternates. So three regular and two alternates?
Yeah. Okay. Do we need to set that up as a special agenda item to make that change?
Yes, you couldn't do it tonight. But we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right. So we'll look into doing that. The specifics will be straightened out between now and the next meeting that we can put it on. Any other thoughts or comments of anything that we should know or be aware of?
I would like to remark that I was very impressed by the previous presentation that was given. There was a lot of technical content in it, and I wish I could have been involved since twenty sixteen in that whole process.
Okay, well, there's no time like the present to start then. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Barbara?
And if you do have a meeting, don't forget to invite your ex officio member, me.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
If you do have a meeting, you don't forget to invite your ex officio member, your ad hoc member from the council.
From the town council, which would be Barbara Healy.
Yes, of course. I regret to say that since you became the ex officio member, we have not been able to meet.
Right. But you can meet, as Paul says, you can meet. You just can't make any official votes.
I didn't understand that. I thought when I first came to the committee that that was not permitted.
If you, if you do not have a quorum, you can't make any official determinations, any votes to spend money or do whatever, you know, things like that. You can always discuss amongst yourselves things that you're interested in.
Okay, but we can't like call the meeting to order or have minutes or approve minutes or anything of that sort.
No, there'll just be discussions. There'll just be discussions that you can then share with the I T manager or whoever would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that.
Okay. Eileen?
I just, I think it's important to remember that this is an advisory committee. So we don't need to be particularly concerned about whether there's five or there's three in terms of, you know, the numbers because if they vote on an amount of money, they can only advise the council to spend a certain amount of money or take a certain action. They need to, you know, bring that forward, which we very much, very, very, very much appreciate, I want to tell you.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate you and Kevin being here. We have, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Legislative updates from state reps. I do have an email I received from Maureen Mooney that I will read in her absence because we've got a full house. She didn't want to get in the way of other people. But she says, greetings, town councilors. Number one, the House Judiciary Committee voted to retain H B four seventy-eight, an act relative to treatment of P F A S contaminants in the drinking water of the Merrimack Village Water District. This retention means the bill will be considered further This retention means the bill will be considered further by the committee with a recommendation due in 2022. It also means they didn't kill the bill, and so it is still alive, but it's on life support at this point. Number two, the following bills come out of House committees with ought to pass, came, came out of House committees with ought to pass or ought to pass with amendment recommendations and will likely be considered during the upcoming House session on April 7th through 9th of 2021. HB 236, an act creating a statute of limitations on civil actions relative to damage caused by perfluoroalkyl and per- Yeah, PFAS substances. HB 271, an act relative to standards for per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, PFAS, in drinking water and ambient groundwater. And HB 135, an act requiring parties responsible for pollution of a drinking water supply to be financially responsible for certain consequences of that pollution. And then three, she points out, the Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals is making an effort to inform members of when water-related bills have hearings so that members can sign and support. She can be sure to notify the town as well. Thank you for all we do. Respectfully submitted, Representative Maureen Mooney, Republican, Merrimack. So if there's no other representatives, we'll move on. Town managers' report.
Hey. The contract, our contract assessor, Lauren Martin, and assistant town manager, soon-to-be town manager, Paul McCally, teamed up with our media division to create an educational show about the upcoming townwide revaluation, which I think is really important. This will be aired within the next couple of weeks on our local community television station, and the link will be on the town website as well. Thank you.
Any questions for the town managers' report? Seeing none. We'll move on to, we have no consent agenda tonight, nor old business. That brings us to new business. Number one, a little free library at Horse Hill Nature Preserve submitted by Angie Merrill, town council to be presented with and consider a proposal to build a little free library at Horse Hill Nature Preserve.
Hi.
Hi, and welcome. And you are Angie?
I am Angie. Is this press for that?
There we go.
Hi, thanks for having me. So, yeah, my name is Angie Merrill, and I just wanted to present to you my proposal for a little free library. So if you are not familiar with a little free library, it is a nonprofit organization that is globally run. The idea is that you take a book, leave a book. These are already, and I'll share later, but these are already available in some spots throughout the community in Merrimack. And so the idea is that you can, it's free. You can just take a book. If you'd like to borrow one, you can keep it. If you have one you'd like to put back, you can. So that's kind of the basic idea of it. And just a little bit of background, this is something that I've been thinking of and trying to do in my head for about five years, and I just didn't know where I would put it. I live on a cul-de-sac, so personally, at my house is probably not the best place. And so fast forward till last year when our family started getting tired of being cooped up in the house with COVID. We found Horse Hill Nature Preserve, which was not a place we had frequented before. And so we started taking lots of family hikes and trips there throughout the warmer weather. And so earlier this year, when, as it does every year, comes into my head of I would love to do a little free library, I thought, wouldn't it be cool to maybe do this at Horse Hill Preserve, which was a place that kind of got us out of our COVID funk for a few months, and we were able to kind of get outside the house. So that's kind of how the two came together. This is just my suggested build plan based on the research that I've done. It would not be pink, but the idea is that it would be a fairly simple house-style structure. The estimated dimensions of the house where the books would go, the box itself would be 14 inches by 16 inches. From the base of the house to the top would be about 23 and a half inches. Based on my research, it works best to have a post that would go about two feet in the ground. Hopefully, that could be done with some sort of quick-set concrete. But if that's not allowed, I know they have the spikes that can go on the end of the post and have that go in. So it would be about two feet under the ground, three feet above. So total height would be just under five feet from ground level up to the top. The idea would be, the handle would be right around four feet or so, which should be good for the little ones as they, you know, need to climb up and grab a book. I'm by no means a contractor, but I, these are what I have put together as a proposed list of the materials that I would take. This, of course, is all pending what would be available once I would actually start to build it and kind of how stuff comes together. But these are what I've kind of come up with that would be the bulk of the materials needed. I would, of course, for exterior paint and the, around the plexiglass around the window, try to make sure that that is as waterproof as possible so that nothing can get in. This was back when there was snow on the ground, but I took a drive over to Horse Hill, and originally, I was thinking on the other side where the map is, but once I got over there, I realized that spot would not be very good. So there is a memorial bench already located there. So I think it would be kind of cool to have the library next to the bench where, you know, if someone wanted to browse through a couple of books and see if they looked. I did meet with the Conservation Commission earlier last month, and they said that that, that spot is better than the other side just due to plowing and handicap parking and things like that. So that would be my suggested spot that I think would be good. And then just to talk through maintaining the library, the little free library, you can, the organization, when you build the library, you can register it and you can become a member, official member of the organization. And they have what's called a steward, which is the person that would be kind of owning that library. So in this case, I would be the steward, and so I would be the one that would kind of maintain it just to make sure that, you know, nobody's doing anything that they shouldn't be. But the, the real idea of this is that I'm not the one that's always stocking the books, that the community would be the one that's kind of keeping this going. So I would love to have this be potential nature theme due to the location at the beginning, but I don't think that that's something that I could say, you know, you can only put nature books in here because it kind of defeats the purpose. So I see myself checking in on this, especially in the warmer weather, it's a lot more frequently when we're there hiking and going on our walks. But I also see for continued maintaining and continued outreach, you know, putting some stuff on Facebook. I've had a great conversation with Yvette from the Merrimack Library, trying to see how we could work together and try to push this forward. So the idea of, you know, leaving bookmarks and notes at the library, maybe there's an email address set up for the library where people have questions or would be great if they have large boxes of donations. I could meet them somewhere and, you know, we could talk that through. The other piece, when you register through the library, is they will put the location of your library on their site. And so other people could go on their website and try to figure out, you know, where there might be a little free library local that they could go to. There are, as I mentioned, others in Merrimack. My understanding is that there are three at personal residences that are actually listed and registered through the Little Free Library site. I'm sure that there are more that they've just popped up on their own. And then I believe the Kids Cove and Wasserman Park libraries are owned by, or are put together through that at the library. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions? Peter?
Mr. Chairman, just as the representative, the liaison to the Conservation Commission, we saw this presentation, and the Conservation Commission highly supports it.
Okay, great. I appreciate that confirmation. Anything else? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beautiful presentation, Angie. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can add Webster Green also has, I'm not sure if it's a, if it's an LFL, but Webster Green also has one tucked in there as well. So I think this is a great opportunity. I think for people that are using the woods, it's a place where they can go, people can meet, you know, do some book swapping. So I think it's, it's not just, you know, to me, the way that I look at it, it's not just like a, it can be organic, but it also can be a place where people can meet and be able to discuss things. And I think starting off with the nature piece, I think, is wonderful. I think that's certainly appropriate. So I support the project.
Thank you.
So thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Barbara?
So Angie, have you reached out to any of the scout troops in the area? Because we have a lot of scouts going up for life badges, and they often get in touch with Kyle looking for projects to do. So these guys are kind of handy with hammers and nails, so.
I have not, but that is a great suggestion.
Then you might be able to get some help with your manual labor.
Okay, that's a great suggestion.
Dig in the hole.
Oh, yeah, dig in the hole.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I think it's great. It sounds like a very nice project. It sounds like a great idea that you're taking it on. And I appreciate that. If there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council approve the construction of a little free library at the Horse Hill Nature Preserve, and that furthermore, the town manager be authorized, if necessary, sign any paperwork necessary to commence, commence construction of the little free library.
Second?
Motion is made by Bill. I heard Peter first, so seconded by Peter to approve and accept the project at Horse Hill Nature Preserve with assorted addendums to it. If there are no other comments or questions, we'll call for a vote.
Just the name, Eric Faust, F-A-U-S-T. You can probably find him on Facebook. He's, he's active with one of the Boy Scouts.
Okay.
Okay.
F-A-U-S-E.
F-A-U-S-T.
F-T, okay.
Yep. I'm sorry, F-A-U-S-T.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Pass is six zero zero, and we'll be happy to see what you put up there, preferably not in pink.
Not in pink.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. Next on our agenda is a discussion of the 2021 Summer Farmers Market and Community Garden update and discussion submitted by the Agricultural Commission Chair, Bob McCabe, town council to be presented with and to discuss the details of the upcoming 2021 Summer Farmers Market and Community Garden. Mr. McCabe, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, member of the council, town manager, thank you for having me. I just want to get updated.
Bob, can you hit the button on the mic?
Sorry.
Thanks.
I would like to get updated with maybe the town's concern, or council's concern about starting the farmers market on time this year. We, I projected, our projected start date would be June 9th, and we want to do 18 Wednesdays as usual, which ends October 6th. Last year, we started a couple of weeks late because of COVID concerns. I think by June, most of us will have the first shot, if not the second shot. And I guess I'm asking the council if they're gonna support the farmers market like they did last summer with the PPE equipment through the CARES Act that we needed to keep everybody safe coming and going to vendors and so on and so forth.
I don't see any reason why you wouldn't be able to get the PPE you need as far as face masks and hand sanitizer kind of things. Is that what you're asking about?
Whatever we, whatever we needed. There was a whole list of criteria. There was some, some concern at the beginning last year. It was resolved. I'm here to ask if it's coming this year. I would need to know.
I think we have the materials. Eileen?
Whatever we have, we'll, we'll have to basically ask around what our, what our existing inventory is, but I don't, I don't believe there's any more money left for, for buying any. So, but I believe we probably have a surplus of things, and we'll get back to you and let you know.
Okay. When could that happen, with the knowledge of letting, letting me know, Eileen?
Early next week.
That would be wonderful.
Can you give us a list, Bob, of what, the things that you're looking for?
We had masks, we had stakes, we had gloves, we had-
Stakes?
Stakes?
Stakes, because we had to put yellow safety rope up in front of the vendors and create a sidewalk.
Yep.
We borrowed the stakes from Phil last year. He gave us. They came from the, the winter parking area. Maybe he has some this year, maybe not. I don't know. All that would, to get us through 18 weeks. The reason why I'm asking is, I asked for a box of masks a couple of months ago just to have in the town council room when we have a meeting. I was told there was nothing left. I was told that.
I don't know. I actually don't know the answer to that, Bob.
Okay.
Because it hasn't really occurred to me whether or not.
I'd like to let the vendors know what's going on.
All right, we'll find out for you.
Also, we had a six-foot restriction.
So the vendors should be able to provide their own masks, right? And most people have masks by now, so I'm not sure what-
Well, not everybody. We handed out masks every week, absolutely every week. And if they didn't have gloves, we provided that. It was mandated to have a safe environment.
Yeah.
So we used up-
I think we require that people come with a mask, and if they absolutely don't have one, try to provide one.
If they didn't have one, instead of letting them walk back across the parking lot, or if they were elderly, if they needed one, if they were handicap assisted, we provided plenty of masks to keep the market safe. I would also like to know if the dates work for the council, so I can let Charlie and Joel know at Vault Storage.
Oh.
The June 9th date, start date, Wednesday.
I personally don't have any problem with that, but. Eileen?
Paul says we have 10,000 masks in inventory, so we've got plenty of masks. We need to, I need to find out about lots for you.
Thank you.
But those are the primary things, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I saved the rope from last year, so we're halfway there.
Good. I mean, I, I don't see any reason why we would control the day you start.
The farmers would like to know, you know, what to look forward to, because they're relying on their income to be there.
Sure. And, and everything we can do to help?
My safety training is still up to date. If there's any improvement on the distance of safety, would the town council and the town be allowing the minimum standard to be minimized? Meaning, we were six feet away from the vendors' tables last year. If the rules are relaxed as we progress to June, would you be willing to go with the new rules? I.e., three feet from the table?
I have no problem with the new rules. I think our health department and stuff has to be able to rule on that kind of stuff, and they would, they would keep you informed.
Well, I can touch right at that office.
With the health office, yeah.
I think we're not gonna be making our own rules, though. We would-
No, we would go by whatever the CDC and the federal guidelines are and-
Correct.
If they reduce it to-
What we see governors tend to say to us every day on Channel 9, you know? They're relaxing. That's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk to Charlie and Joel, tell them we're gonna go for June 9th.
Sure.
Proceed that way.
Hopefully, things are growing by then. Not at my house, but, you know.
They're, they'll be growing.
Good.
We're gonna have another drought this year. That's what's projected. The farmers will make the best of it. Anyway. And then we'll move to the Merrimack Community Gardens at Wasserman Park. Again, we're projected to start mid-May. End date is October 10th. All the garden plots will be cleaned out at the end of the day of October 10th. This year, we're bidding out the rototilling process. I still have the implement. My tractor needs some work. So Xenia assembled and put out a bid to have the garden rototilled or rotated. We'll see what response we get from that by the end of this month. My request on the bid was to get it done by April 15th so we could go in, put the stakes in, put the strings in, and flag everything and ID all the plot numbers. We'll see how that works out. Other than that, the water faucets will be turned on by the end of May, just about the time they're gonna start planting. Parking and designated parking lots only. I have to remind all the gardeners, because there's been some flex in that rule. Previous gardeners have until April 10th to send their applications into us, and they can get their old plot numbers back if they so require. And they can get their old plot numbers back if they so require. After April 11th, we will entertain the new requests for garden plots. And we do have a few of them coming in. I didn't check my mail this week, but we hope for a lot of interest, as people are still stuck at home and need to get out. Any questions on the community garden?
So what's the cost per garden plot?
$10 for a 10 by 10 garden plot at Wasserman Park.
$10 one-time fee?
A yearly fee per plot.
Not a monthly fee or anything like that?
Yearly fee per plot. And we have plenty of plots, so nobody has to be concerned about running out of space. Some plots, of course, are better than others. That's why our veteran gardeners are there, first come, first served.
Okay. Peter, did you have a comment?
Bob, how big an area needs to be rototilled?
80 feet by 250 feet.
We, the town doesn't have any piece of equipment that could do that. I know they maintain fields and do such a...
I don't know that they do. They need a 75-horse tractor with one-inch attachment.
Our DPW director is saying, no, we don't have anything that can do that.
I mean, could we help them with the rent, you know, renting a rototiller and then maybe letting DPW staff do the work, help them out?
I have the rototiller.
Oh, you got the rototiller?
I don't have the tractor today.
Okay.
Anywhere.
It's a, is it an adaptable one? You can put it on the back of a front-end loader or something? Or how big is it?
Three-point inch.
Okay.
Rear-mounted. A big farm tractor. It has to have a one-inch attachment with a finger that attaches the rotivator. The tractor I had used for the last 12, 13 years was 72 horsepower. I don't know if we have anything that big, you know?
We have a small junkyard tractor, I'm not sure.
I would say no. You know?
I just didn't know if Parks and Rec or somebody had something just to help them out to, at one time.
Not that I'm aware of. You know, it's a big, for me to fix this tractor right now, it's a big endeavor, and I'm not ready for it. So that's why we put the bid out.
Okay.
And we'll see what happens. I mean, if all else fails, I could at least use another, a smaller tractor and harrow the garden. I won't get as deep as the rotivator we got. Fluffing the soil, turning everything in. But we'll see what happens with the bidding process. That's all I can hope for at that point.
Sounds good.
And then, I was handed this at our meeting two weeks ago. I'd like to give the councilmen and ladies a copy.
We actually received this.
It was given this by another commission member. My email's been compromised six, seven weeks ago, and I'm still struggling with Xfinity to bring it back. We go through this every few months, it seems. The rules change, and they keep changing, they keep changing. And I'm tired of the inconsistency in the rule process. We were told, in requesting equipment or supplies, to vote on it, discussion at our meeting, vote on it. The vote's being passed. Submit our minutes to finance. And I'm really doing the best I can. I don't know where to go with this. I mean...
Finley, I think the concern was that we were going, the agricultural committee was going through boatloads of town ink printer ink.
That's correct.
The way I always understood is the committees were set up to go, send what you wanted printed, the town offices would take care of that. I mean, I saw a list of purchases that were made for ink in particular, and it was pretty substantial. And so, if you can go through the town offices, that would be the better way to do it. There's more, you know, we have control over situations and we're able to run, you know, off-supply business appropriately.
When we do mass mailings, Finley, we have Tammy do it for us, and we're charged for every copy. You've got to remember, this is our money. This is not tax money from the coffers of the town.
The town is responsible for it. I think we hold it, and so, what I'd like, I wish I knew you were bringing this up earlier, because I would have had Paul give me a list of the different things that have been requested for purchase over the years.
I have the whole list here, if you want to look at it.
This is an annual conflict that we go through, because this was brought up last year, too. And I'm not sure why it goes on. It doesn't with any of our other committees, so I'm not sure why it does here, but it does. And so, I, we should, if you have the list, I'd like to see a copy of it, because the list that I saw was pretty enormous.
Here you go. This is the last month of...
Well, okay, no, what I would like to see is a past...
It's an average month, Finley. Let's just chat about that for a minute. So, when I prepare for a meeting, second Wednesday of the month, I go to a couple of different sources, Extension Agency, UNH, Market Farm Bureau, New Hampshire Farm Bureau, and I copy all the classes, all the webinars, all the new information that are pertinent to agriculture. So, on any given Wednesday at a meeting, I could maybe bring with me 30 color copies. How would I do that? Pushing that through Finance Department, asking them to do it, to look up criteria on this site and that site, and so on and so forth? You guys got to remember, I graduated college before computers, so I'm still a dinosaur with this thing. I don't even know what a flash drive is. Never used one. So, when I go home at night, I might sit in front of a laptop after dinner for a few minutes and try to gather my mail, assemble the information for a meeting, make a few copies, get the portfolio ready for the second Wednesday of every month. People call me. My computer's not talking to my printer. Can you send me this application? Can you send me this? Can you send me this extension brochure? And I'm happy to do that. That's why we use stamps, too, which is another thing in that list, Finley. I don't believe I could do without a printer. I haven't in the last six or so years, eight years maybe, that I've been doing it. And for me to go to the town hall, how many days a week to have one copy made, one envelope pre-stamped by the machine?
But if that were it, Bob, that would be fine. But it's not that. It's large quantities of ink and so on.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a set of ink every month. I'm sure it is.
Well, and see, nobody else does that. That's the point. You should, you know, you can operate an email, because you receive emails, and you should email that right down to whomever a town office you're supposed to direct it to, and mail print it for you, because it just, again, I wish I had...
How do I do that, Finley? You know computers. I don't know how to do that.
If you're receiving things, I just thought that you would be able to send them out to. I don't know. And it's not, really, I'm not prepared to discuss that tonight, but it's something that I think we should have a discussion about, because, again, I don't have it in front of me, because the numbers were quite large over the past few years.
That's an average month right there, average month. Last year, Zenia asked me, she said, I'm going to do a mass purchase of ink. What do you think you're going to do? How many are you going to use in a year? So I threw a number, 12, 12 sets, black and white in color. So the order comes in, and I said, is any of the, you know, she'd let me know it came in. Well, I'm here to pick up my ink. Well, I can only give you one at a time, and I only ordered six from the 12 you requested, at a really good rate. So I used the six up in, let's say, six months, and now we're back to buying retail ink, instead of going into the mass purchase. It wasn't me that cut that order.
I'm just suggesting why it was cut. I, again, I'm not, I wasn't at all prepared to speak about it tonight, but at some point in the near future, I'd like to.
Tom?
Eileen?
I just, I think, I think you are all seeing this. You've gotten the information. It was quite some time ago, so we are not able to, you know, recall it off the top of our heads. It was, it was very substantial, as Finley had said, and there was a concern about it. So, we, you know, if the council wants to bring it up, we need to bring all those facts and figures to the meeting, rather than just hear about it on the fly. So, you know, if you, if you want to bring it up with the council again, that's fine, but they need to have the information before them, before you, before they can, you know, intelligently discuss it with you.
Thank you, Mayor Town Manager.
Mr. Chair?
Peter?
Bob? Do you have kids, grandchildren?
I have no grandchildren. I have three children grown.
Are any of them computer, because there's many things...
Only one lives with me.
Because, you know, the agricultural commission could also reach out to the public. There are people that are willing to help you who have skills in graphic art, that you say to them, hey, I want to do this flyer. They can put it together in a short period of time, email it to town hall for you. They can help you out, and then these guys can take care of the mass printings and whatever you need.
We've been doing this for 13 years, Peter. The commission, nobody's come forward. 13 years. Nobody's come forward to help us, except us, the committee members. It's been a struggle, and it's been a struggle with the inconsistency of the ruling. Now the rules are changing again. I'll be honest with you, I don't like it. And I feel like I'm being subjected to the point of harassment. I don't like it.
Okay. Paul? That mail, email, for those who don't know at home, came from me. We do not treat the agricultural commission, in that email, any different than we treat any other committee. Conservation, planning board, heritage, historical, they all come through finance, and they all get their printing done, and they all get their mailing done through the mail machine at town hall. We are not treating the agricultural commission any different than any other committee that we have in this town. I have opened my staff up when I was told we don't have staff. I opened up my staff. I opened up Tammy Lambert for my staff to do the printing, the sorting, the stuffing. Even volunteered my staff for that. We have opened up for this. 12 print cartridges. Case in point, Becky Thompson, an executive secretary, same printer, doesn't go through pile print cartridges any year. We do not treat the agricultural commission any different than anybody else. Okay. Thanks, Paul. Bob, I think we're trying to treat the committee the way we treat the other committees. This wasn't a subject you put on the agenda. This is kind of out of the blue, as Eileen alluded to. If you have a continued argument or discussion, I think you need to deal with the town manager's office to figure out how you can resolve that. If that doesn't work, or it can't happen, then we just have to reevaluate, I guess, the whole procedure, the ag commission and its interface and relationships with the town. You don't want to operate like a committee of the town, then maybe that's what you're not going to be, as a committee of the town.
I guess we'll have to talk about that there in the next meeting.
Okay.
It's very unfortunate. It's our money from our sweat and labor. Thank you all for hearing me.
Thank you, Bob.
Have a great night.
You, too. Okay. That brings us to our third item on the agenda, the 275th Anniversary Certificate of Recognition, submitted by the Merrimack 275th Anniversary Planning Committee, the town council to issue a certificate of recognition designating April 2nd, 2021, as the Town of Merrimack's 275th Anniversary. And there is one around here somewhere. We sent around for signatures. Did somebody want to talk to that? Yeah. So, we have a Town of Merrimack Town Council Certificate of Recognition to the Merrimack's 275th Anniversary, whereas Merrimack will be honored by its citizens on the occasion of our 275th birthday on April 2nd, 2021. And whereas Merrimack is rich in history and tradition, and whereas Merrimack citizens have served the community well with the pioneering, from the pioneering days to the present, and whereas many special activities have been planned to celebrate the occasion of this anniversary, it is fitting that we should join in this expression of our pride and appreciation for the many civic and economic benefits that our community has enjoyed over the years because of growth and prosperity. Now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in us as the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack, New Hampshire, we do hereby deem it a pleasure to extend this certificate of recognition on the occasion of the 275th Anniversary of the Town of Merrimack, and witness whereof we do hereby set our hand and seal this 25th day of March in the year 2021 by the Merrimack Town Council.
So moved.
Motion by Bill and seconded by Barbara to accept the, or to issue this certificate of recognition. Are there any other comments?
I just, there's a lot of great things planned. I know Matt has been working full steam with his group, and it's going to be an enjoyable summer with things going on all summer long, so I'm looking forward to it myself.
So technically, the anniversary is the second, but we're actually spending the entire year and maybe even longer, as we remember from our last presentation on the Covered Bridge. That may take a while to get it actually into fruition, but it's a project being spearheaded by the 275th Anniversary Committee, and we are excited about all the different things that are planned throughout the year. So it is, it is going to be an awesome celebration. Barbara?
Paul.
Did you have something? Paul, sorry.
I just want to invite you all. April 9th, at 3:30, we're going to read the proclamations and actually have the 275th Anniversary kickoff.
On the 9th?
On the 9th of April, it's a Friday, 3:30. I know we're planning on awarding the Boston Cane. We have a proclamation coming from the governor. We have a proclamation that I received yesterday from the Speaker of the House. We have the town council's proclamation. There'll be a couple of distinguished guests in the audience, and it's going to be a quick kickoff ceremony on the 9th, but at 3:30 on the 9th, Friday the 9th, and take this as your formal invitation. We'll be sending out formal invitations, but just wanted to let you know that, mark your calendars, it's coming.
Okay.
Masked and socially distanced.
Rain or shine.
Abbey Griffin Park.
So it'll be at Abbey Griffin Park, and we actually have a council meeting the day before, so you can remind us in case we forget, but thank you for that. So, we're going to get a few more signatures on this. You want to pass it down to Lon or whoever? Nancy will try to get her signature onto it as well. But anyway, congratulations and thank you to the 275th Anniversary Committee for all the work that you're doing. We haven't voted yet?
We haven't voted yet.
All those, if there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes, six zero zero. Passing it around for signatures. That brings us to probably why Matt's really here. The Natticoke Day Camp Summer Camp Recommendations for 2021, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Casperius. The town council to be presented with the Summer Camp Recommendations for 2021 with COVID-19 restrictions in place. All right. Good to have you here, Matt.
Good evening. I will try to keep this short. You know me, I can talk, so we'll try not to. As you recall, when I was here back in January with the budget, I had asked for permission at that time to open up summer camp registration, so that we were in time with all the other camps around us, so that we didn't have that negative, negative stereotype that, oh, maybe they're not running, you know? And you gave, gave me that permission with the understanding that I'd come back to once the state issued the official guidance. Two weeks ago, on the 11th, the governor finally released that update, which had been approved by DHHS and the task force in mid-Febber... which had been approved by DHHS and the task force in mid-Febuary, so he'd been kind of sitting on it for a while. But in your packets, I believe it's in your packets, is the guidance documents for day camps. And what I've done is gone through kind of each section and printed in red kind of how we're addressing each section of the document. The original document started as, I think, seven pages, and now we're up to 18 or 19, I think, now. So we, we feel we have our ducks in a row. And I'm not going to read it, because you can read that on your own.
Thank you.
And I'm trying to be brief. On, 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 when the, when the governor releases his, this document, he said he was putting this out as an intermediate step. He keeps, he keeps using the phrase in his press conferences the last couple of weeks about, you know, having a big summer. His hope is to kind of continue to further loosen restrictions in New Hampshire by Memorial Day, as long as things keep trending downward and more people keep getting vaccinated. What I will say is this document is a hundred times, a thousand times better than what we were presented with a year ago. So we feel really good about, you know, where we are at this point. You know, one of the biggest improvements is obviously we have a vaccine now. And two weeks ago, they actually announced that day camp staff could apply now and get vaccinated in, in the same phase as teachers and childcare and that kind of thing. And so we were kind of starting to mobilize towards that process. But then this afternoon, he actually had an update, and he, he has opened up basically next week, everybody in New Hampshire of 16 and older can get up, can get vaccinated, or can get scheduled to get vaccinated. So 40 and older Monday, 30 and older Wednesday, and 16 and up, starting next Friday, can, can go in and register. So that, that takes a whole, whole host of things off the, you know, off the problem list, because realistically, we can get, you know, all camp staff that want to be, you know, both vaccinations, you know, long before we open the doors. Sorry, lost my place. So how camp will work this year will be kind of similar to what we had planned originally for last year, which is our camp groups are broken down into small pods as soon as they arrive at camp. And our groups are kept intentionally small from the, and kind of isolated from the rest of the camp. So they move around in their own activities, but they don't actually directly interact with any of the other groups within the camp. And so, for example, if, you know, a camper came in and, you know, and was positive for COVID, because obviously a camper can't get vaccinated yet. If the staff member is vaccinated, they no longer have to quarantine for 10 days as they would have, you know, a year ago. It also means that, you know, if there was an outbreak within one of these individual pods, we wouldn't have to shut down the entire campus we thought we might a year ago. One of the other big limiting factors last year is we were limited to group sizes of 10 people, counting staff. And that just was just financially not feasible to even cover kind of direct operating costs. This year, the guidance has allowed groups of up to 20 people, counting staff, although in most of our cases, we're looking at around 12 to 14, which is pretty close to what we would have in a normal summer, anyway. We did obviously go up on the cost of camp just because of increased, you know, personnel costs as well as, as supplies and, you know, hand sanitizer and, you know, those kinds of things. Although we did buy a lot of that stuff last year and then have been sitting on it for a year. The other big question that was, came up last year was that, you know, whether campers needed to wear masks. Only 40% of day camps in New Hampshire ran last year, and every organization had a different policy on how that was going to work, because the, the language was just really vague. The state this year did clean up the language. And, and again, 90%, 95% of our day is outdoors, anyway. The only times we go indoors are if it's raining or if it's something specialized, you know, and I'll use arts and crafts as an example, where it's, you know, we're going to try and do arts and crafts outside as much as possible, but there's some stuff that just doesn't work outdoors. And, and, but basically, anytime campers are, campers or staff are, are indoors, or anytime that six feet of social distancing can't be maintained, they have to put a mask on. Excuse me, we've been dealing with this for, for a year now. People have gotten, people have gotten used to it. And it's no longer the kind of the hot button issue that it was last year. You know, YMCA Camp Sergeant last year ran with 275 kids a week. They didn't require any campers to wear masks. They, only their staff did, and they were fine. You know, now I talked to them the other day. They are, because the guidance has been clarified, they're basically used, following the same rule we are, which is indoors or within six feet of distancing, you know, everybody puts on a mask. So there, that gray area disappeared, you know? And again, people are used to it. Especially the kids that are in school even part, part of the time have gotten used to wearing masks, because it's been a year. And, you know, just as an aside, you know, we ran a small December school vacation week this year with 10 kids, and then February vacation with 16 kids. It's kind of a trial balloon to see how kind of all of this is going to work and flow, and, and it was fine. We had two good weeks. And, you know, we've kind of tweaked things a little bit here and there, but we feel we're, we're ready for summer. In a normal summer, we would average around 160 kids a week. Right now, we're looking at about 110. Part of the reason for that is that one of the things in the guidance is they're not allowing field trips right now. And that's where most of our teens like to go. We are opening our regular camp for teens and trying to do things on site, kind of special for the teens, but the state's not currently allowing the field trip aspect of things. So, so it does cut our numbers down of where we might normally be in a normal year. But our 110 campers would be split into seven groups, which is again about two-thirds of our capacity of what we would normally have. In the event of rain, we have the ability for each of our seven groups to have their own dedicated building at Wasserman Park. So even if we were stuck with a day that just was going to rain all day, they do have a place to go, do have a place to have activities. And it's not, we don't have to send them home. We don't have to. Each of those buildings has bathrooms, they have sinks, they have hand sanitizer, you know, so forth. But again, that's only comes up if it's going to rain all day, you know, or all week. All of our campers and staff will be going through a daily screening process, similar to the kids that are in school now. You know, we look for obviously signs and symptoms. We go through a variety of screening questions, and everybody has daily temperature checks done. We will be encouraging staff to get vaccinated, because they now will be able to do so. Meals at Camp will still be held. We do, we eat outside any day, every day now, anyway. But we will be looking at staggered meal times with kind of the food brought out to them rather than them coming into the building just to keep them outside. Now, we've been taking registration, as I said, since January, but we're about 30% off of where we were a year ago. Now, a year ago, we were looking towards a record-breaking year, but even still, we're, we're down. We're also, you know, families have told us that they're kind of afraid that what will happen this year is what will happen last year, which is we'll get to June and go, oh, sorry, camp's not running, you know? And, you know, the staff, it's the same thing. I, you know, in a normal year, I'd have, you know, about 85 or 90% staff retention. Almost done. No?
I don't think you need to do any more, at least from, from my perspective, you don't need to do any more convincing of us that summer camp is, is a go this year. I mean, at least from my perspective. I wholeheartedly support you, and I really appreciate everything that you've done and did last year to get this underway. And as you said, people understand. People have masks, kids know what to do. There are vaccines, there's all kinds of things. And I think it's very, very important for kids to get out and socialize like they're doing with school. And, and I think it would be, I, I think it would be a good, I think what you're looking for is to get a positive or some kind of an answer from the, from the Town Council, definitive, which I don't expect can cha, is going to change. We're not going to get worse.
Yeah.
We've been through a year.
Right.
So I think that we're, it's pretty predictable at this point that we'll slowly get better.
Right.
So I just wanted to say that I am fully in support of reinstituting the, or.
Going forward with summer.
Moving forward with, with the summer camp again.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then, I will really cut it short and just say, that is what I, what I need is the, just the, the final okay that I can tell families and staff that we're a go.
Does anybody have any comments on the council?
I was just going to comment that with, with Governor Sununu opening up the vaccine to 16-year-olds. You know, that's the, that's the demographic that Matt uses for not just councils, but for CITs. And that they're the ones that are going to be interacting with the kids. So the fact that they're going to be having the opportunity to get inoculated gives them the level of prophylactic that they need. I, I, there's no reason why, there's no reason why we can't open up the camp this year. There's absolutely no reason.
I, I have no problem with you opening the camp. And I don't, I don't know that the Town Council has to do anything. Last time, we took a vote not to go forward, but that's a standard process that you would go forward. And so unless there's somebody that wants to make an objection, I think we, we wish you smooth sailing and go for it. Yes, Eileen?
Okay, I just, I just think that Matt needs to hear you say out loud collectively that you approve, so that his, his potential, not you personally, but collectively.
No, I understand.
Collectively, so that he won't have people who have cold feet or are afraid that we're going to change our minds. So would you mind taking a vote?
I have no problem with that. If someone wants to make a motion.
A move that we have Matt start the process of getting day camp opened at the time he finds appropriate, using the guidelines from the state as he's started to prove to us that I agree with his plan.
Is that, is that good for you?
It worked for me.
Okay. So motions to, for the council to encourage Matt to move forward with opening summer camp, following the guidelines as issued by the governor and modified periodically by him as well.
Because my daughter may potentially be employed under you. I, I will be voting present. I don't want that to be indicative that I don't support of what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstaining?
Present.
And bill prints, bill's present. So there's five, zero, zero with Counselor Boyd, present. So, go for it. It's great to have you working for us there, and we really appreciate the effort. Okay. Which brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is a DCU donation for the Merrimack Fire Department, submitted by Fire Chief Matthew Duke. Town Council to consider the acceptance of an expenditure of a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the Merrimack Fire Rescue to be used towards the purchase of a blowhard, positive-pressure ventilation PPV fan and Streamlight box-style flashlights with accessories, pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article 815.
And the chief came with a prop tonight, too.
Just don't shine it in my eyes.
Yes.
You've had these before, haven't you? Or don't you have some older versions of these?
Yes, we do actually have a couple of these, and we're very satisfied with them. Thus the reason we wanted to buy another one.
Oh, okay.
We're, the other fans that we've been using have, have predate me being here, so they're 20 to 40 years old. This technology is much better, moves much more air. It's battery-powered, so it's easily portable. We can carry it over, set it up at a door or whatever opening we're using, unfold it. It's shown in those two pictures. Obviously, in the top photo is the, the unfolded in-use position, and then it folds up as shown in the bottom picture, and it has a shoulder strap to carry. Makes it much more convenient. You can unfold it, turn the dial, comes on immediately, and then we can go about finding, you know, finding 120-volt power to support it. But it'll, it'll run on battery for, depending on the speed, you said that the other, one of the other nice features of it is it's a variable speed. So the fans that we have been using have one speed, which is blow all of the stuff out the back of the house. Anything that's not nailed down kind of blows out the back of the house.
Goes with it, yeah.
Yeah, papers and other loose items. So this has a variable speed, so we can kind of adjust it to our needs. It's, it's a much nicer unit. And then the other item that we're looking to buy is 11 of these style flashlights. It's a lantern-style flashlight. They're LEDs, so they're, they're very light. Bulbs last a long time. They have little taillights on the back of them, so if we're turned off, so I don't blind you. If someone's wearing it on the sling over their shoulder, not like that, over their shoulder, it has taillights on the back, so that if you're following somebody in dark or smoky conditions, you can kind of see where they are. So the, what we're asking is respectfully asking the Town Council to accept the $5,000 donation from Digital Federal Credit Union for the purchase of one blowhard fan and 11 of these Streamlight Vulcan box lights, which, as shown on the bottom of the handout, totals 5,115. The balance, of course, will come out of our operating budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
11 of the lights?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you, are, do you assign them to individuals? Or assign them to the trucks?
They'll be assigned to, to trucks. We, we have had some of those in the past that have, over the course of their lifespan, have, have broken or need to be replaced. So we'll replace those on the, the most-used trucks first, or the, the ones that are, are missing those lights, and, and we'll just cycle them down through.
Okay. And you're only getting one of the fans? You have some older ones still that are still functional?
We do still have some older ones, and we also, we have purchased some other of these blowhard fans in an attempt to kind of refresh our, our stock of fans. We carry one on each of our fire apparatus, so all of the engines have one. The ladder, the rescue, has one. Not, not one of these, but they all have a fan of some sort. So we're working our way through, you know, updating that equipment. And this seemed like a good opportunity to, to make another step in that process.
Yep. Sounds great. Any other questions from the council at this point? I guess we're looking for a motion then to accept and expend $5,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union.
So, Mr. Chairman, with a letter of thanks to DCU, again, for their continued partnership, for the variety of institutions that they've supported here in the community over the last couple of years.
Awesome. Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara. If there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six, zero, zero.
Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Which brings us to Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities BRIC Funds Application Discussion, submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox. The Town Council to consider a request to expend up to $60,000 from the Highway Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund to support a FEMA benefit cost analysis submittal with respect to the replacement of the US-3 Bridge over Babusick Brook. Kyle, welcome. Thanks for hanging out with us here.
Sure thing. Thank you, Chairman Gagne, Town Councilors, for having me tonight, for this really important topic. So ultimately, I, I will be asking the council to consider a request from the Capital Reserve Fund for this project. But I thought it would be great for, for you folks and for the folks at home to kind of get a history of what, what brought us here, and it'll be brief. So we're, we're here tonight to really talk about the US-3 Bridge over Babusick Brook, which is the bridge, Daniel Webster Highway, near the NYA building. So the, the history of the, the bridge being a replacement project started in 2013 with us submitting a request to the state to include it in the State Bridge Aid Program. And the real reason we put it in initially was to, with the goal of improving the pedestrian access across the bridge. We had looked at perhaps doing a sole, a standalone pedestrian bridge, but the crossing was very, very large and it was really infeasible to do. So we came up with the idea of, of doing it as a, as part of the bridge replacement project. So back in 2013, we submitted a, an application to the state based on square foot pricing of similar bridge sizes and that, that amount to do an estimate at that time of $2.5 million. Since that time, in 2015, what's that?
I'm cringing as you go on. That was eight years ago, right?
That's correct. You can cringe. So in, in 2015, the bridge was actually placed on the state municipal red list. So as the condition deteriorates, the, the state noticed in their inspections and, and marked it as, as a bridge they needed to inspect every year. So the bridge is currently in the, the approved tenure plan. You notice the, the increase for inflation in the current plan brings the project total up to $3.6 million. And, and this is where we stand in approved funding for the project. You may remember last, last August, we held a, a public hearing for the project. I know Chairman Keneck was able to make it. And, and that was part of the feasibility study for the project. And we concluded the feasibility study with a submittal to the state in October of last year. And, and what, what that, the feasibility study process identifies all sorts of alternatives for different bridge types, dimensions, how you, how you accomplish the project. In this case, the need for a detour bridge because of the 16,000 vehicles a day on Daniel Webster Highway, the potential conflict with the reconstruction of the turnpike at the same time. So all those factors were, were put into the feasibility study and, and ultimately presented itself in the proposed bridge, which takes it from a 20-foot opening concrete arch bridge to a 120-foot steel beam bridge. So it, it's a gigantic difference in what was originally estimated back in 2013 versus what we need to do. So the, the preferred alternative estimated cost last fall when we submitted it to DOT was $5.7 million. And that's where we stand today. Unfortunately, with DOT being fiscally constrained in the tenure plan now, there, there's not enough money in the State Bridge Aid Program to fund that bridge project fully. And we're prevented from moving into the next step of the project, which is final design, until DOT gives us the notice to proceed, which they won't do until the project has a funding source. So we're kind of, we're kind of stuck at this point.
So we're on, we're still on the red list, though?
It's still a red list bridge. Yep, it's not getting better by itself.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but so we're just in limbo. Eileen?
There are many, many bridges on the red list.
I understand.
I just, for the public education, I know you know that. It's, it's not in danger of collapsing any day now or anything like that. It's, as Kyle said, it's, it's, needs to be inspected every year and we don't expect each year that it's going to get any better. So, so it, it is a matter of concern or, but not urgency.
Right. So just a quick question, if it's not on the red list, how often does it get inspected?
Every two years.
Two years.
So every state and municipally owned bridge in the state gets inspected at least every other year by the State Bridge crews.
Oh, okay.
When they're on the red list, which is bridges of a certain condition and all timber bridges are inspected yearly.
Okay. So it's not a huge difference. It's not like a five or 10 years down to one year. It's two down to one. Okay.
So trying to figure out how we can fund this project, we've had a lot of discussion with the state. Looking at federal programs through federal highway. And we just haven't gained a lot of traction because there's so much need in the state and there just isn't a lot of funding for bridge funding. So our consultant actually came up with a clever idea to investigate the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Program Grant or the BRIC program as a possible source of funding. Now, this is a program that, that's administered by FEMA rather than federal highway. So it's a completely different administrative group. And instead of DOT managing those funds for the feds, it's the Department of Safety, Homeland Security and Emergency Management folks that would manage that fund. So we had a meeting, oh, so let me stick to the agenda here. The, that program, unlike the State Bridge Aid Program, which is an 80-20% state town split, the BRIC program is a 75-25 federal local match. And when I say local, it means state level match.
State level match?
80% of it. So the, our 80-20 split on the whole project, and we'll get into this in better detail because it is a little confusing. So instead of us being responsible for 20% of the whole project, we're responsible for 20% of the 25%.
That's a good one. That's down to 5%. I like that.
So that, that's, that's the carrot sales pitch at the end of the presentation.
Well, thanks for not keeping us in that much suspense.
Sure. So, so our consultant and Dawn and I met with the folks at HSEM on March 3rd to discuss the project. They, they looked at it as a very favorable kind of project.
Oh, good.
But did note that it is a competitive nationwide program. But some New Hampshire communities have been successful obtaining these BRIC grants. What they told us was the primary, or one of the primary factors is the benefit cost analysis of the project. And there's a gigantic complicated spreadsheet that you put all sorts of data in and you have to come up with that benefit cost analysis or BCA and the number has to be 1.0 or greater. And basically what that is, is the cost of doing the project versus the cost of not doing it and having to repair what gets damaged in a flood. And that can be public property, private property, things like detour lengths should the facility be disrupted. There, there's a lot that goes into it. So I just put up a, a few maps here just to show the extent of, of what we're looking at. So this is the, the Daniel Webster Highway Crossing over Babusick Brook. The kind of crosshatched area or diagonal hatch area, that's the brook itself. The bluish kind of area is the 100-year flood zone and that's the area we're primarily concerned about. And then the orangish area is the 500-year flood. So what the, what the analysis will do is it's going to look, get really close at everything in that 100-year flood and make a determination from there. You'll note that on the downstream side of the bridge, there is no flooding because this is the constriction.
This, this is what causes the flood.
And just, it's not in my presentation, but I'll, I'll mention it. We've, we've talked about it in the past. But you recall when we did McGaw Bridge Road and Bedford Ridge Road? Bedford Bridge Road, Bedford Road Bridge.
Bedford Road Bridge, yeah. It's close.
It's almost bedtime. That we got a design waiver from DOT, knowing that we were going to eventually replace this bridge to build those at a lower elevation such that they would pass the 100-year flood once this bridge was replaced, saving both the state and the town money on those bridges, so.
Should I wait till the end?
No, go ahead.
Is that taken into account the changes we've gone through?
Can you put, sorry, has that taken into account the changes we've made upstream?
It, these haven't. These are 2009 maps.
Because this could be even worse then because of the volume of water will come down. It won't be held back like a dam under the old bridges. It would be coming down more forcefully and would it flood greater than it's showing here?
Potentially. I'm far from expert in hydraulics, but my consultant did say that these are based on the 2009 firm maps, which is flood insurance rate maps produced by FEMA. The updated maps are actually worse than these as far as extent of flooding due to changing models and, and how they predict things, so.
Thanks.
So the next one is, is really an interesting picture. So this is McGaw Bridge Road, which we just replaced a few years ago. Now you can see during a 100-year and a 500-year flood, the bridge is actually underwater, which we know because that's how it was designed.
Oh, okay.
The new bridge, yep. But this is, this goes to our benefit cost analysis. We can show FEMA that without replacing the, the bridge that we don't have funding for, this bridge is underwater in a flood. Additionally, this is the Everett Turnpike Crossing over Babusick Brook. And you can see how much of the Everett Turnpike is under, underwater in the 100-year flood. Now this is, I imagine, going to create some, some good impact on the benefit cost analysis. Because when you talk about detoring 48,000 cars over
And they're not coming up Babusick Lake Road?
What kind of distance, right, exactly.
Because that one's flooded also, right?
So it, this would, this is going to have a major impact. Furthermore, Quantum, because they've done all of our projects all the way up to Wire Road, they, they have the hydraulics for the brook all the way up and they're going to model it all the way up as part of this exercise to really capture everything they can to make us as competitive as possible in this, in this grant opportunity. So this is just a fun little graph, bit hard to read. The important piece to look at is this line right here is the 100-year flood line as it is today. So this is the US-3 Bridge. So you can see it's partly underwater. This is the McGaw Bridge. You can see the 100-year flood goes all the way up to the very top of the beam. And then here's the Everett Turnpike Bridge where it's actually being overtopped by the 100-year flood. By doing our project, here's the new 100-year flood line in that blue line. So this is, this is what the project does for, for the flood elevation in the area. It's a very significant difference.
So I'm curious, the, the turnpike effort that they're going through, is that taking these kinds of things into account?
So it, it's interesting. We haven't been able to get that answer from them. They, the, the design contract, I don't know if it's even been awarded yet. I know talking to Wendy last year, Wendy Johnson, the project manager, that they had gone out to request for proposal for designer for the central portion of the project. They had contracts, I think, for the north and south end, but the middle part, which is Merrimack's part and the biggest part, three consultants were kind of trying to work together. Their price was higher than expected and I'm not sure Governor and Council ever passed it, so kind of in limbo. But even with that, they hadn't done any of the bridge design yet. And what this structure actually is, is a double box culvert. So it, it's, it's not a typical bridge as we know it. It's two box culverts kind of side by side. The opening is fairly small and it's, it's pretty low. If you go out and I think it's Sundale Road off of McGaw Bridge Road, you, you can see it out from the end there.
But don't they have to replace that bridge when they do the widening?
Maybe, maybe not.
The box culverts might be wide enough to allow the third lane?
Right, and particularly if we do our project.
Well, but Paul?
I live in a neighborhood that abuts those culverts and the water, brook. They're raising the highway in that area six feet. So they are taking into account, raising the highway in that area six feet. The Wire Road Bridge is in that area. They're redoing the Wire Road Bridge. They're raising that highway supposedly six feet in that area as well to take in the extra water flow. And I believe they were thinking about putting a bridge there and taking out the two box culverts as part of the, the project when they came through and talked to our neighborhood, Mallow Point.
You said it much clearer than I did, Paul. Thank you. So, yeah, so they are raising the grade of the road. They hadn't decided if they were going to replace the bridge yet or not, or just put extensions on the existing box culvert. So that's what they hadn't determined yet.
So six feet in your picture here would take it out of the water?
Presumably.
Just curious.
Hard to tell.
Maybe, or close. Okay, thanks.
So, so here's our proposal. We'd like to hire our consultant to assist us in the development of the benefit cost analysis in anticipation of applying for the next round of the BRIC funding program. Tentative timeline for the program is the next notice for funding opportunity would be this August. Completed applications would be due in November of this year. And then projects would be selected in June of 2022 with the projects not receiving funding until 2023 at the earliest. But that works out great for us because, I don't know if you've noticed or not, in the tenure plan slide, the project is funded in fiscal '24 for the state. So that would align perfectly with what we need. Here's the, the fun slide that I promised, the little carrot. So taking the hypothetical, if we, if we stick it out and hope by some measure the state can find their share of 80% of the cost, our 20% town match of the project as estimated today for 2024 would be about $1.2 million. Going into the FEMA BRIC model with the 75-25 split, you'll see the second line under that is a BRIC and COVID escalation. So there's two reasons for that. One, as soon as you go into federal money, as we've seen with the South Indian River Trail Project, the cost escalates greatly. There's just so many more requirements in any federal project. But we also put a, a little extra escalation on because unlike the State Bridge Aid Program, if, if there's inflation or other items that cause the project to increase, the state's 80% share increases. With the BRIC program, whatever you get, you get. So we were advised by HSEM, make sure you ask for enough. So, so we added 20% into that for a revised total project cost of 7.1 million instead of the 5.7, or 5.9. Yeah. So, so taking the 75% out for the federal share brings the, the 25% match down to 1.8 million, of which our 20% of that would be 358,000, or about an $800,000 difference. So, so, so that's the risk reward of what I'm asking you folks tonight is to spend up to $60,000 for this benefit cost analysis, knowing that we'll probably have to spend a little more after because we'll probably need help doing the application as well. I don't have an estimate on that yet, but it, it, it'll pale in comparison to the, the carrot, which is the potential $800,000 savings.
Anybody have any questions? Finley?
I just wondered if you could just tell me the, the length change from 2013 to 2000, I don't remember the year. Went, went up to 120 feet?
Yeah, so the current bridge is a 20-foot span and the new bridge is a 120-foot span.
And that's what I heard, but I didn't think I heard it correctly.
Yeah, I know you did. The, the, if you go down there, let me flip to the first slide. It shows you a side view of the bridge. You can see it really constricts the brook there. And, and if you look, this is on the south side, the downstream side. And if you look at the, the northeast slope beyond, just to the right of this picture, it's private property. The water comes through and I wish I had the numbers for you to speak on it, but, so I won't guess. But the, the velocity of the water coming through this bridge, even during normal flood events, or normal storm events, is, is higher than, than you want and it's really eroding that bank. So it, the, the reason for the length is primarily due to the hydraulics of, of the brook.
Take out that shoot through.
Yeah, to lower the velocity of, of the, the brook as it's coming through that location. And that 120-foot span is what was required.
Thanks. I didn't even recognize that. I couldn't figure out what that picture was.
Yeah, I should have mentioned it.
On this, it's totally different than that. That becomes more obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even still, you don't see that angle very often. So let me be devil's advocate for just a minute. What happens if our current president gets his infrastructure bill and suddenly there's money all over the place to build things like bridges and whatnot? Is the state going to get a chunk that's going to possibly fund the, the 10-year plan or something, maybe?
It's, it's possible.
Or would FEMA get funding from that as well in order to promote the BRIC program? Any ideas?
It's possible. We haven't heard anything definitive. Certainly.
Go ahead. You can finish your statement and then she'll interrupt.
I mean, really, it's, it's up to the legislature and the governor. It was really disappointing not too long ago. You recall the state increased Not too long ago, you recall, the state increased the gas tax and one of the components of the increased gas tax was a chunk added to the state bridge aid program. And it, on paper, doubled the state bridge aid program. The problem is before the next funding year, they stripped the old funding away. So now the only funding in the state bridge aid program is that new gas tax money. And of course, with COVID and people driving less, that program's going to take another hit, so. To your question, Chairman Koenig, it's possible and we're always hopeful. But we've we've been waiting years for a new transportation plan and and it just never seems to materialize.
Okay. Eileen?
Is there a particular urgency for us to apply? Are there like timelines or something within a certain year to apply for this brick program? Or can we wait a little while to see what what might shake out with the federal government?
Yes, so the the schedule, the the application will be due, I think I said, in August. The notice to for the funding opportunity is August. Applications are due in November. You know, we certainly could wait some time just to kind of see how things shake out of the next month or so. It is a lot of work to do this. So I I wouldn't wait too long, but but certainly again, yep.
So you're talking about waiting maybe a month?
Sure.
Okay. But that's not much time for the government to get their act together. I mean, I think they're going to be struggling with that infrastructure bill for a while. Paul?
Having done one of these years ago, when we took the house down at Beacon Drive, it took myself and the town manager three years to get it through this kind of funding because of that ratio, one to one and things of that sort. It's a complicated ratio that you have to go through and and they're looking for specific words and specific reasons why. You can't just say, yeah, it's a it's a two to one. That's too high for them. That's an outlier. Why is it two to one? There's no way. So having a consultant on board to kind of do some of the hydraulics and paperwork with the the firms and the maps and things of that sort would be greatly appreciated. And then we could always go to emergency management and they would help us if we asked later on, how do we do this? How do we do that? They they are willing to help apply because it's a feather in their cap to get these programs for the state. So but the big thing is making sure we can get all our data up to the point of applying. And normally with with government money, if it does come through, we can just stop and say, we're done. We got we got federal funds. We're done. We're not we're not proceeding anymore with with the contract and we'll definitely put that clause in there that if federal infrastructure money comes available and the town has given that, every, you know, we're stopping, we're not going to complete the contract. So we could put that in the the contract as well.
Sorry, Paul, but then you've wasted $60,000 and potentially the 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 design cost, which is also higher. So all I'm just saying is let's just, I mean, my suggestion is if we can wait a month, I think we should wait a month.
Okay, so Eileen's suggestion, we bring this back up to the last meeting in April. Anybody have any thoughts or heartburn over that?
No, I'm I'm generally supportive of it. But to wait a month doesn't hurt.
Yeah, the question is whether you're spending money out of the capital reserve fund and then therefore that money that was allocated for
Right.
replacing the bridge is is low by 60,000, but you save a ton if it actually comes to fruition. There's a risk factor there.
Yeah.
I guess the suggestion that I'm hearing from Eileen is that we give it another month to see where we think the wind is blowing. Because we'll still have time to to move forward with this in time unless our contractor is is itching to work and we'll get busy in a month or something and we think we lose that.
Well, they're always busy, but I'm I'm sure they'll 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 work around it.
They'll find people.
Yeah.
If I might, Kyle, what how what is the pile of money that they're taking out of for these programs, the federal program?
Uh, that's a great question. I don't know that answer, but I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks. I'm just, you know, if it's a good sized pile, we might have a little bit better chance because I think this, the reason for this work is, I think we'll prove that there is a substantial benefit, but.
Yeah, I think there's a substantial benefit and so the question is whether or not that passes. And and I think you alluded to and Paul's kind of alluded to with federal grants like this, it's it's somewhat of a risk whether you're actually going to make it or not. Eileen?
The only one, the only thing that I wanted to say is don't don't feel that, I mean, I don't feel passionately about this or anything like that. And if you feel like that you'd want to move forward with it at this at this point, I would have no issue with it.
I can go either way. Again, I'm generally supportive, but if a month's not going to be harmful and we'll still have an opportunity to have our consultant have enough time, then I'm on, but.
I will add just one extra point. So normally our bridge contracts are fixed fee pricing for the project. In this case, because we're going to try and do as much of the work as we can, Don and I, and there's a lot of assessing work that needs to be done, we're going to do as much as we can in-house. So the the proposal is a time of materials proposal. It's not a fixed fee.
Well, I would say it's a good idea to go forward with it as best we can, but I'd also like to come back in a month or something and see just just what the lay of the land is. So I would I would suggest that we reschedule this for the second meeting in April.
27th, I think.
Eight and 14 is the 22nd?
22nd, birthday.
And make a decision then as to exactly whether we're going to fund going forward with the consultant. Meanwhile, you, if you have time, can start working on some of your preliminary stuff.
Sure.
To to continue to put it together for sale. All right?
Absolutely.
Does that sound good? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle.
Which brings us to the second quarter financial update submitted by Deputy Finance Director Thomas Boland. Do Deputy Finance Director Thomas Boland will review the key financial information of the quarter ending December 31, 2020, realizing the town's not on a annual fiscal plan. This puts us halfway through the year. And Justin, my light is still on here in case you can turn it off. Thanks. Just just this guy that says that somebody's mic is not on?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He thought he could just tell.
Just, yeah. Anyway, all right. Tom, how are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Thanks for hanging out here with us.
Oh, it's great to go last.
Always great to be last?
Raring to go.
We're still going to do agenda items after this.
Oh, okay. So I'm not totally last.
You're not, yeah.
All right. I am here to present the the town's second quarter financial report. You may have just mentioned this, but the the second quarter covers the six month period from July 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020. It's the halfway point of the fiscal year, so a review of the numbers at this point should give us a reasonably good view of what the the entire fiscal year will look like. And what you will see as we go through this, if I do my job right, is that the the picture is is a good one. Despite everything that's going on in the world, the town's financial position remains very solid. We're in in good shape relative to the the budget that we're working with for the current fiscal year.
Okay. Thanks for that preamble. I appreciate it.
Okay. Looking at the appropriation side of the budget and focusing on on some of the larger expenditure areas that we usually talk about, one of those is health insurance. For the first six months of fiscal 2021, the health insurance costs are running about $55,000 townwide for the general fund, higher than the same period in the prior year, which is about a 3.6% increase. That's the result of a a small increase in the health trust premiums and an increase in the number of enrolled full-time employees due to budgeted staff increases. So that number is is higher than the prior year.
Eileen?
I'm so sorry to cut in, but I just, I I have some news that I I pass along to a couple of you and this just jogged my memory. As you probably know, in our budget for next, for this upcoming fiscal year, our guaranteed maximum rate by our health insurance company, I believe, was 2.2% increase, something like that. And it ended up, the final number ended up being a decrease of 4.6%. So next year, we will see, actually see a de, a pretty good for health insurance. So sorry to interrupt you, Tom. Irrelevant to this.
Very, very important news. I'd be very happy to see that chart start, start to go downward instead of, right, instead of upwards. So in terms of fiscal 2021, the budget for the entire year for health insurance is 3.4 million. So being at 1.6 million halfway through the year is is a pretty good place to be, slightly below budget through the the second quarter. Retirement expenses is another large appropriation area. These are required contributions to the New Hampshire retirement system on behalf of the town's employees. Looking at the numbers through the first two quarters, we're running about $141,000 in total ahead of the prior year, or an increase of almost 12%. The contribution rates are unchanged from the prior year to the current year. So the increase is a result of budgeted staff increases as well as, as I'm going to show you on a subsequent slide, a significant increase in overtime pay, which which is subject to the the retirement contributions.
And and that's related to COVID. The overtime and they they go hand in hand. They get related to COVID. I just, Tom doesn't know this, but this morning I put in a reimbursement request for over $200,000 worth of overtime to be reimbursed through FEMA for COVID-related activities. So that's why retirement's up. That's why overtime's up in the fire department is because it's related to COVID and COVID-related events.
Correct. And and we're budgeted for these kinds of increases because they told us retirement was going up this much or roughly? No?
No. What he's saying is that during the whole COVID, especially early on, when we had the one car going out and we did, we were doing a lot of overtime, we were we were told that we would be reimbursed for a lot of that. And and when you you can't show it as a negative, revenue as a negative to an expense. So basically, as you know, gross budgeting, so you do, you do your expenses for your overtime, which are high because of the the COVID, but are reimbursed. And you have your retirement expenses show high, but those reimbursed as well. Is that clearer?
Sure.
It is not? If you want me to explain it better, I will.
No, I, no, I don't. Thank you. I appreciate it.
It's not that interesting. Okay. I get it.
Okay, moving on to that overtime conversation. This chart shows overtime across all the town departments and and what you'll see is that obviously fire and police in terms of size are by far the biggest contributors to overtime overtime costs compared to the other departments in the in the town. Looking at police overtime, police overtime has actually declined in the current year compared to the prior year. It's down by $36,000 or about 19%. So that's helping out and helping to partially offset what we see as the the big increase there, the really tall bar with the fire department overtime. Fire department overtime is up about $280,000 compared to the prior year. As Paul mentioned, there there's a there's a number of factors involved here. Obviously, the the COVID situation has increased the the amount of calls and other demands on fire and ambulance personnel, certainly. In addition, when members of the department have been exposed to COVID or tested positive for COVID, they they miss time and that time has to be filled in with with overtime in order to maintain our targeted coverage levels for the department across the the three daily shifts. There's also been a little bit of turnover in the department, which due to the lead time and finding qualified replacements results in in increased levels of overtime for the the existing staff. The good news is, as Paul said, a good chunk of that money is eligible for reimbursement through these COVID funds that have been made available. So there is an offset here, so it's not just a, you know, a direct hit to the the bottom line, if you will.
In in addition, for fire, just want to remind everybody that we increased the overtime in this budget because of the the staffing model that we incorporated with the call daytime attendance. So it also is a planned increase in overtime in the budget because last year, we're talking 2020, 21, which we planned on when we voted, when we did the budget, when the council voted on the budget back last April, of a planned increase in overtime in the fire department to cover that 20, those 16 hour shift of what we used to call for call attendance. So just wanted to remind everybody at home that is, there was also a planned increase in overtime for fire.
Right. Eileen?
What I was saying to Paul earlier was that in the future, it might be more relevant to show budget to actual rather than, because if there were anomalies because the budget went up or down, comparing them to the prior year doesn't really show us what we're looking for, which is basically, how are we doing this year?
Compared to what we were planning?
Right.
Yeah. I I think.
I mean, this is good information as well. I don't say, I'm not saying it isn't.
We do have a a chart coming up that
Okay.
looks at budget to actual.
Okay, great.
Barbara?
Yeah, it appears that communications was up slightly. Is that the backfill from COVID as well? And is that refundable or reimbursed from FEMA as well?
There are some staffing shortages in communication.
Okay.
So it's a couple of items, yes. The overtime for COVID would be there, but it's also because of staffing shortages that we have to cover.
Okay. Eileen?
So in the so in the case of of when there's a shortage in staff, obviously, we don't spend the wages for the position that isn't is vacant, but we do spend the overtime. So there's a bit, somewhat of a correlation there.
Okay. This next chart is is just another look at overtime, but taking out fire and police just because in the in the prior slide, they dwarf these other areas so much that you can't really get a
Can't see anything.
You can't really see anything. So this is just looking at the at the other departments and you'll see, for the most part, overtime is is down compared to the prior year in most areas. As as Counselor Healy pointed out, communications being an exception, and we talked about the reason for that. In the other departments area, the increase there is primarily in the building and grounds department, and that relates to the the cleaning protocols that were put in place when we reopened Town Hall facilities and that that we still are are currently currently doing. Not a a large total dollar magnitude there, but a a an increase over the prior year.
Significant percentage change, but not a huge dollar amount, yeah.
Right. Yeah, we're talking
20,000 or something less.
Less than that.
Yeah.
12, 15,000, something like that. Uh, this is the chart that I I alluded to, which kind of looks at Uh, this is the chart that I, I alluded to, which kinda looks at, um, appropriations by department, total appropriations by department for the, the six-month period, um, compared to the, the full fiscal year budget amount. This, this chart is a little bit, um, busy, I guess, uh, you could say. Um, but just to, to review it quickly, you've got the department column on the, the left-hand side. The, uh, the budget column represents the full 12-month, uh, budget figure, uh, for that department. Uh, year-to-date expenditures is obviously what we spent, uh, the first six months of the year. Um, the next column is just the difference between the first two columns. So it's the, the balance of what's left in your budget before you consider encumbrances. Uh, encumbrances are, yeah, an accounting thing. Um, it really represents commitments for, that we have made to future expenditures that will happen later in the, the fiscal year, but for which we have, um, existing, um, purchase orders or contracts, things we've committed to that are, um, uh, this is the, kind of the, the tally of what, uh, of what's there. So if, and then the balance column, uh, takes the balances before encumbrances and subtracts your encumbrances. And then the last column is a percentage column, uh, of, of what that balance column represents in terms of the overall 12-month budget number. Being halfway through the year, absent the encumbrance issue, you know, you'd hope you had 50% of your budget left to spend, uh, at this point in time. The reason why several of these, uh, department numbers are below that 50% uh, figure is those encumbrances, because that is stuff we're going to spend that's, um, that's kinda been, been reserved for, if you will.
So can you help me understand why we would bother to put encumbrances in here? If we haven't spent it, but we're thinking we're gonna spend it, we were thinking we were gonna spend it in the second half of the year anyway. So when you, when you do a percent of budget remaining, we haven't spent that money yet. I, I guess I'm confused what the value is.
It's, well, it's something that us accountants like, because that, that tells us how much we've yet to commit. The, the stuff in the encumbrance column is already spoken for. So in terms of, of what we've really got left, that we can spend, that's what's there. I was actually gonna try and, and point everybody's attention to the, uh, the columns before that encumbrance, uh, line. And just compare the year-to-date expenditures for six months versus the, uh, uh, the, that balance before encumbrances number. And, you know, for any department where that, uh, balance left in the budget before encumbrances is, um, at least equal to or greater than the year-to-date expenditures, I would say at, at a very high-level, quick view, um, you know, things are in, are in pretty good shape. And for the most part, um, that is the case. Couple of exceptions, being, uh, town clerk, tax collector. The, uh, that balances before encumbrance number is, uh, is slightly lower than, uh, what we've spent in the first six months. Not all departments experience or, or spend their money, uh, evenly. Well, nobody spends it completely evenly, but some more evenly than others. But that, uh, figure for the, the six-month period in town clerk, tax collector, includes the expenses for the, uh, the November presidential election, which are higher than, uh, normal, higher than what we should experience for the, uh, the election coming up in April. So there's a little bit of a, a skewed, uh, number in that, uh, year-to-date expenditures. There are some overages there because of, of, of the COVID situation and what that's meant to, uh, how we go about the election process, the additional hoops we gotta jump through, the absentee ballot process. So there are some, uh, some overages in that number too, but they're not, um, of a, of a huge magnitude. Uh, that welfare department, uh, number is also, uh, kinda skewed, because the, the biggest part of that welfare budget is the contributions that are made to the social services agencies, and that all happens in the first half of the year. So, um, we're, we're in, in good shape, uh, in terms of the welfare department budget. Which was pretty much all I had to say about that, unless there are any questions. Uh, that kinda covers the appropriation side. Uh, looking at the revenue side of the budget as well, the areas that we, we usually focus on in terms of non-tax revenues are auto registrations, building permits, and interest on, uh, on the town's, uh, pooled cash reserves. Uh, obviously, auto registrations is by far the biggest, uh, number here. And the good news is, those numbers continue to, uh, to chug right along. We're at, uh, 2.9, almost $3 million through the first six months of the year. Our budgeted number for the whole year is $5.6 million. So unless the sky falls in, we should be in good shape to, uh, to meet those numbers. And we don't expect the sky to fall in, so. Uh, then, uh, again, this is another one of those charts with the building permits and the interest. You can't really see on, on that chart, so if we isolate those and look at those, uh, separately, interest on cash reserves is, is something we talked about when we did the first quarter reviews. Um, and just to refresh everybody's memory, uh, you know, we saw the interest rates that we earn on our, uh, invested cash, uh, go, declined by a factor of 10 almost overnight when the, uh, uh, the COVID pandemic really kind of, uh, reared its ugly head. And there's been no change in those rates. They've continued to deteriorate a little bit, uh, from that point. Um, we don't expect to see much of a change, um, going forward. Uh, so we will be significantly under budget when it comes to interest. Um, but overall, on the revenue side, that's, uh, very much mitigated by the fact that we do have those, uh, COVID funds, uh, which were, were unbudgeted revenues that we have coming in. Uh, we've also received some, uh, insurance premium refunds, uh, on our workers' comp and on our, um, health and, and dental insurance. Uh, the COVID, uh, reimbursements through the first six month in total, uh, which doesn't include anything Paul was talking about applying for recently, but we've received 600, over $600,000. And the insurance refunds that we've received in total, uh, are about $240,000. So that does, uh, certainly help the cause. Uh, building permits numbers here are, are down a little bit. That's definitely one of those ones that don't come in evenly across the year. You would expect kind of a flurry of activity in the, uh, the fourth quarter as the weather improves. Um, I don't know that we're gonna see that or see it to the extent that, that maybe we, uh, we have in the past. Um, I just know, uh, building materials costs have gone through the roof recently, and I, I, you know, I'm hearing that that's resulting in some people delaying projects uh, in hopes that, that the costs will kinda come back down to, to better levels. So it's something we'll have to keep an eye on, but, you know, overall, uh, you know, it's, it's not a, a huge number that's gonna, uh, impact the total revenue picture, really, one way or the other, for this fiscal year, but something that we need to, uh, to monitor as we go forward.
Another reason why we're not concerned is because we have a couple of large developments that are moving forward. We talked tonight about St. Cobain and their RTO permit, that would be in that figure. We have, uh, the Harris Pond area, that they are starting to ask for their permits for foundations and things of that sort. So, not, and, yeah, and Chestnut Hill. Um, I've heard through the grapevine, Chestnut Hill, the, the builder, is lining up a significant number of homes, um, waiting just for final approvals. But he's ready, he's ready and willing to start building this summer with a significant number of homes up there in the Chestnut Hill. So we should be able, that's why we're not overly concerned, as concerned with that number as we are with the interest, um, when it, when it comes to, to hitting that revenue number.
Okay. Barbara?
So getting back to the, um, income and the revenue, where does the money coming in from FEMA for reimbursements, where does that get logged in on? Where does it?
Well, it's not, it's not in any of these numbers that we're looking at, it would be in the, uh, other revenue line.
Okay.
But it would contribute to the, the total revenue.
The total overall, yeah, of course. I was just wondering where it got stuck.
It's in its own, its own line item.
A little bucket.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have any other questions? So generally, you, you started out by saying generally, we're looking good and, and, uh, barring some disaster we haven't already encountered, we should be doing okay for the year.
Correct.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Tom, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh. I was joking. Thanks, Tom. Okay. That gets us through our main agenda, bringing us up to minutes. We have four sets of minutes, because we tabled three last meeting or earlier. What is, oh, last meeting. So we have minutes from January 28th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, move the town council, council meeting minutes of Thursday, January 28th, 2021 with two changes.
Can we get a second? Moved by Bill and seconded by Barbara. What are your changes?
Lines 21 and lines 32, it should read N-H-D-E-S.
Instead of NI?
Correct.
Good point. Is a dash supposed to be there, or is it remembered?
I think the dash makes it look like NH.
There's also down at line 32, did you mention that?
Yeah, I said, I did, I did, Mr. Chairman.
32, 24, 21. Wherever, wherever you see it.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else?
Counselor Healy? Okay.
If there's no other, uh, changes or corrections, the motion's made to accept the minutes with a few corrections on the first page.
There's one more question that I just noticed.
Okay.
I think it's great, G-R-A-T-O-N.
Where is this?
Sorry, I thought that was line nine, page five.
Okay. Not Crichton, but Grayton? Oh, okay. You got that, Paul?
I failed to turn on my mic for a third time this evening, I do apologize. It was Arnold Grayton, not Crichton in the minutes, line nine, uh, page five. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other changes, we'll call for a- Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed or abstaining, that passes 6-0-0 with corrections. Thank you. We have minutes from February 11th.
Mr. Chairman, move the town council meetings of Thursday, February 11th, 2021, as presented.
Moved by Bill and seconded by?
Okay.
Barbara? Okay. Um, Barbara, do you have any corrections? Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes from February 11th? None, 12 pages and no corrections. That's awesome. We'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. We have minutes from February 18th.
Mr. Chairman, move the town council special meeting minutes of Thursday, February 18th, 2021, as presented.
Motion by Bill and seconded by Finley. By Peter, sorry. I just heard the noise over that. Okay, with no corrections, anybody else have any corrections or changes? Oh, this, okay. Great. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. And then those lengthy minutes from March 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I move the town council special session minutes of Wednesday, March 10th, 2021, as presented.
Second, uh, motion was made by Bill and seconded by Peter. See, with that mask, I can't, you know, you're just staring at me, you know, it's like- Can't read your lips or anything. Okay, uh, does anybody else have any, any corrections to the minutes from March 10th? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed or abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Which brings us to the last page that's here. So that brings us through minutes to, um, comments from the press. Comments from the public.
Thank you, Chairman Kilmick-Koning. I'm Nancy Murphy, 20, Brenda Lane. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the effort that you put into, um, uh, helping DES to, um, move forward on action towards St. Cobain. I'm disappointed that there's not $50,000 a day being collected, which would fund many of the positions, um, that DES probably could utilize to, to meet some of the needs that we're asking for, in terms of assignment of responsibility for the other wells, um, and those kinds of things. So I think that's a loss. Um, so I think that, that may be to Counselor Albert's point about, um, St. Cobain feeling as if they won. That certainly is, um, you know, that's $50,000 a day for the next, however, five months would certainly have added up. You know, it's a position every two days, and to my mind. So it'll be hard for me to support DES, uh, when they say they don't have the funds to, to do what we need. They had an opportunity to and chose not to, so it disappoints me. The other thing I wanted to say was, um, thank you to Sarita Croce, um, to people that may not know what she does. Not only does she do here, but she is phenomenal, she's brilliant, and she does such great work. Um, she's on a, a, um, a national PFAS, um, uh, cost pilot project with me and Northeastern University. And, um, she, she has spent countless hours, I'm sure, outside of work time to contribute information as to the impacts of PFAS, not only on, um, you know, what we're trying to, just water, but health and, and how, what happens in wastewater management and across the whole state. So, um, the work that she's doing, not only here, but for national purposes. And when we go and we, legislation, we often hear, well, you know, what's the cost? We've gotta look at the cost benefit analysis. That's what Sarita's, you know, providing and, and that will, that will put it, the cost of, the impact of PFAS, make it a little clearer and, and help to, um, I think, drive legislation and, and encourage people to, uh, to support it when they realize it's not just, you know, a remediating wells and, um, and that, it's really a, a much larger cost. So I just wanted to say, I know she's not here, but, um, thank you, and, and we have a treasure. We are very lucky to have Sarita, so, thank you.
We are, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, um, that brings us to comments from the council. We already did press. Anybody have any comments they wanna share?
I'm good.
That's almost hard to believe.
It is, it is hard to believe, isn't it?
Not that you're good, but that we have no extra comment.
Yes, yes.
This is your chance.
Okay, so, you know, so you won't be befret, um, no comments. Uh, I just wanna let everyone know today is National Medal of Honor Day, and for those veterans out there who have received this particular honor, it is the highest honor that can be bestowed by our government and our military. And these people are exceptional. So if you know someone, please say hello and acknowledge this day for them. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for, for letting us know. I didn't realize that today was that day. It's great. If there's nothing else-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Bill, seconded by Barbara. By Lon? By Lon? Okay. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? We are adjourned, thank you very much, please turn off your mics.